Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 25th, 2018 Placer County Board of Supervisors Meeting. We will begin our meeting with a flag salute by our county council, Karen Schwab. Led by...
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its hands.
Thank you. It's kind of hard to see who go with that guy.
(laughter)
All right. We're going to move to our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the county executive department. All items will be approved by a single roll call vote. Anyone may ask to address consent items prior to the board taking action, and the item may be moved for discussion. Anyone on the board have a consent item that would like to have pulled? Anyone in the audience have a consent item that they'd like to have pulled for discussion? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for motion.
(inaudible).
And a second, and this is a roll call vote.
Duran.
Yes.
Euler.
I'm staying.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes. Now is the time for public comment. Persons may address the board on items not on the agenda. Please limit comments to three minutes per person, since the time allotted for public comment is 15 minutes. If all comments cannot be heard within the 15-minute time limit, the public comment period will be taken up at the end of the regular session. The board is not permitted to take any action on items addressed under public comment. We have a full schedule today, so I'm going to try to stick to the 15-minute time limit. If there's any people that still want to talk, we can meet them at the end of the board meeting. Please proceed.
Good morning, supervisors. I'm Bradley Cutler from Granite Bay. Welcome to Tree Lake Storage Multi-Use Trail 2.0. We last left our discussion on January 9th, 2018, and I'd like to review the record to date and ask what the board intends to do. You can see in our packet that you have the chronology of events, my presentation, and highlighted correspondence depicting the high points of the trail's life or lack thereof. It starts with a 1998 condition of approval, and like a good tennis match, you can follow the back and forth between Commissioner Moss and the Placer County staff. You can probably guess the staff recites the laws, requirements that developers have to build a trail, and Commissioner Moss volleys back that those laws don't apply to him, and he kind of sorta already maybe, kind of maybe, built a few feet of the trail, so I'm good, right? The history vaults from 1998 to 2016 in June, when Commissioner Moss, the developer, after many emails and private meetings, succeeds in reaching an agreement. He said he'd use his equipment to build the trail, or at least part of it. But that was soon forgotten, and the project was almost accepted when a local resident pointed out that the trail easement on Moss's land was unsuitable for a trail. The county scrambled to the Moss fort walls and produced a PowerPoint with highlights and maps and swaps and all kinds of impressive stuff for you to show how they are in charge and how it was covered. But in all that excitement and flashing lights, they forgot to mention that the developer was supposed to build part of the trail. They showed you why the bike trail was never dedicated, because it ran straight through an electrical tower. It had 290 degrees in turns and 180-degree turn, which is just what all bike trails should have. It ran through 100 feet of wetlands without permits. It ran across parklands without easements. It went through a wetland sit-back zone against all regulations. The trail wasn't in the easement, so it was never dedicated. But Moss never intended to build it, as any plan chucker would have seen had they looked at his plans. The commissioner got his way, and the facility is up and running. And the residents await action by the Board of Supervisors, in whom we trust and put our faith to apply the laws equally to all developers. Well, I guess this shows all who we know, who, it shows we know who runs the board and who you answer to. Montgomery and Duran asked for this to be resolved and answered, and the county has ignored them. I guess when Commissioner Moss speaks, you listen. Maybe you should apply, you should apply that to the folks who elected you.
Thank you. Morning.
Morning. Scott Vaughn, Granite Bay. So, on the same topic here, the conditions of approval for the mini-storage have always required the construction of the trail. As of this morning, there is no trail. Enforcement of construction of this required trail falls on you. Planning Commissioner Moss, to date, has received multiple gifts from the county for his personal project through selective enforcement of zoning laws, special licensing requirements, and much more. But not enforcing the construction of this required trail per the Tree Lake Terrace conditions of approval, by the way, approved by Commissioner Wiegand, who's not here today, which I'm sorry, on September 9th, September 1st, 1998. Planning Commissioner Moss will receive a gift from each of you personally for roughly $200,000 in taxpayer dollars, because that's what it's going to cost to build the trail, which he's not building, that you're now saying the taxpayers are going to be building. This is a complex issue, but here's a brief summary. In 1998, the development agreement conditioned the trail. Since May of 2016, 17 documents and emails provided by the county show that the board -- the park director, the director of CDRA, county staff, and planning commissioner Moss state that the project requires the trail. In five of 17, the communications mentioned its tabbed. Planning Commissioner Moss tries to circumvent his obligation in two of the 17. Moss then heads, then asks the heads of the department to quote, "Insert yourself in these discussions with staff," and "Call me, please." Following this insertion, the county negotiates a secret agreement after Mr. Moss meets with low-level staff at his facility. It's in the packet. She agrees to change her comment, which she put it on the plans, and says, "As long as he reconstructs the trail on the facility." Then you reach an abandonment agreement that says, "Oh, there is no trail. He's just going to abandon it, and the taxpayers are going to pay it." We followed the process. We have done the required investigations that resulted in the county denying appeals with no explanation, stating the documents don't exist that required obligation. I ask you, where are the entitlements in? When will the rules apply to all of us, that apply to all of us, apply to Mr. Moss? When will you uphold the oath of obligation and forego favoritism, cronyism, complicity, conspiracy, aiding and abetting? The tax assessor has discovered 10 buildings on the wrong lot. The county has lost so many dollars in permit fees and tax associated with that. The county, this new discovery is criminal. When will you pursue criminal charges of influence peddling, fraud, and forgery? Please uphold PC Moss, plus Planning Commissioner Moss's trail requirement, urge the county council to pursue charges against the crimes we committed right under your nose. Do not hand him a $200,000 check. Supervisor Euler, you offered to talk to the DA for information to invest crimes against the county. You offered to put me in contact with him. I'll take you up on that. If your staff is not going to pursue the charges, we'll begin the process. He does not deserve the right, Mr. Moss, to be in land use decisions. Please remove him. In addition, I want to note, you count on county staff to tell you and bring you the truth about items so you can make a decision. This clearly shows they did not bring you the whole truth to make a decision that would have been based on incomplete information to the benefit of your planning commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Hi. I'm Suzanne Schroder, Granite Bay resident. I appreciate you guys' time this morning, ladies. When I was here a few weeks ago, I sat back there, and as soon as Mr. Vaughn came up to the microphone, I heard, "There they go again." I don't like that. I don't like the fact that they have to take time out of their workdays to come up here and remind the Board of Supervisors of their jobs, which is to represent the people, more than the person. There seems like there's only one person or one family who is represented. Personally, I've tried to do a few things like, you know, get some records, some documentation. It's just a bunch of hoops I have to jump through, which I'm reminding council that they are legally obligated to provide when requested. It doesn't seem like it should be this hard. So now I'm starting to realize it's deliberately, it's intentionally more difficult for us to be heard. But why? Why is it so hard for me, as a constituent, as a voter, to be heard? And not just, not just this three minutes, but actually, like, do something about it? We met at your office, Mr. Euler, several months ago, I think in the spring, and you said that there were, we had a list of like 17 violations, and you agreed that there were some that were, whoa, this, even council said, "Yeah, this looks pretty bad. We'll have to look into it." But we haven't heard anything yet, so it's like nagging my kids to clean their room. Come on. Do I have to say it again? It's getting exhausting for you guys. But I promise you, it's not wearing us out. It's only invigorating us. We are only going to keep returning. Earlier this year, there was a joke made about pitchforks. I won't go that far, but they are coming. They will come when it comes election time. They will come when it comes to lawsuits, and we will keep coming. So I urge you to please follow through with what you have, what we've asked you to do and what you're legally obligated to do. When I got up here and spoke earlier this year, I talked about being respectful to each other. I hope that you guys heard that. I want to be respectful. I'm trying to be respectful. But please, just listen to what Scott has presented, what Bradley has presented, and all the documentation they've provided. This may not seem important to a lot of you, but I promise, someday it will affect your communities, because we all live in the same county. And if this is how the Board of Supervisor operates and gives special favors, it will happen to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ailey Hamilton, and I am also a resident of Granite Bay. And I just wanted to come here in support of Scott Vaughn and Bradley Cutler, as well as Suzanne Schroder, and let you know that I am in agreement. I am a resident of that neighborhood, and I am hoping that you would listen to what this gentleman and woman has presented to you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Bart.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I first want to call attention and thank you for your complimentary remarks that each of you or several among you have made and have been published in the latest Farm News published by the Placer County Farm Bureau.
Thank you.
I trust that the remarks you made really do tell us something about your feeling for agriculture in Placer County. But today, I specifically want to go on record for my continuing opposition to the expansion of the Hidden Falls Regional Park Trail System. And I also want to go on record as opposed to the purchase of the so-called Twilight Ride property at 5345 Bell Road in Auburn. I also would like to call attention to the value of grazing in the Big Hill tract. So the rancher that runs out there, depending on the size of his animal, her animal, that animal will consume anywhere from a couple of tons of hay, ton and a half of hay, or ton and a half of forage, to maybe more than two tons of forage over the course of a six-month grazing period. If that grazing opportunity is lost in the Big Hill area, on that some 4,500 acres between the existing Hidden Falls Park and the Bear River, that value of that forage could be something between $300 and more than $400. So I have prepared for your edification, a little handout that I will leave for you today that will more fulfill the remarks I'd like to make. I thank you for your time, and I trust that you will continue to support agriculture in Placer County.
Thanks, Bart. You have his name? Bart Root? Yeah. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Eric Thompson. I live on Upper Garden Bar Road. And in June, I read the Hidden Falls EIS, and I had no real opposition to it, except for the fact that they proposed to change the name of Coon Creek to Raccoon Creek. And I wrote back email, which I have a copy for each of you. As long as a new county sign that says Raccoon Creek. In August, a new sign was put up. I've lived out there 22 years. There's never been a sign not saying Coon Creek or Raccoon Creek. I think the, hopefully, lower-level staff got a little overzealous here. There was no outreach to the citizens that are affected, the people that live near Coon Creek. The county has two surveys going right now on Coon Creek, not Raccoon Creek. If the county wants to change the name of the creek, you need to follow the California guidelines. Every state of California map has that as Coon Creek. Every Placer County map has that as Coon Creek. It's not a prejudicial word. It happens to be an affectionate word for raccoon, shortened. I would really appreciate the Board of Supervisors and my elected officials getting to the bottom of this and having the county get rid of Raccoon Creek. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome to our world.
Good morning, Jeff.
Morning, board, everyone. Jeff Darlington with Placer Land Trust, and I just wanted to respond a little bit to Mr. Root's comment about agriculture. Placer Land Trust is dedicated to protecting agricultural land, as well as natural lands. And we have been grazing the Big Hill area since 2007, and we plan to continue to have livestock out there and graze out there. So I just wanted to make sure you guys understood that our intent and our demonstrated performance out there is to continue livestock grazing in the Big Hill area. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman Holmes, Honorable Members of the Board, Mr. Leopold Bishwab. For the record, Daniel Dotte, Deputy Director with Engineering and Surveying, want to let your board know about a new process improvement we've recently implemented at our front counter for a permit center. So we have a upgraded software system. It's a more robust system that allows us to provide three additional benefits to our customers. The first is when a customer is waiting to be served, they can receive a text notification now that they are ready to be served. It allows them to wander around, maybe go get a cup of coffee instead of having to look at our monitor all the time. We now have a self-check-in kiosk at our lobby that allows customers to check themselves in if there's a line. And then third, we will be having online appointments that they can make through the county's website and through their smartphone, so they can pick times and days that are convenient for them for the appointments. So we're doing a soft rollout right now. In a couple of weeks, we'll have the bugs out of the system, and we plan to reach out to PIO's office early next month to do a formal announcement. I just want to indicate Claudia Wade, engineering manager with our division, is here. She's done a wonderful job of this, so either herself or me would be happy to answer any more questions you have for that.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate a few minutes. Thank you.
Appreciate the comments. Seeing no public comment in, oh, whoop, here we go.
Hello, supervisors. My name is Kevin Dredge. I am a parent volunteer that spoke to you at our last meeting, and I just wanted to thank every one of you for going forward with this movement towards suicide prevention.
That's an agendized item, so you can speak to that when we...
Oh, absolutely. I just wanted to thank you and let members know here that that came is that, you know, we do care and that we do have, we do have feelings for our future and our children, and I can't thank you enough for everything.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see anyone up in Tahoe. Hello? No one? So there's no comment in Tahoe. So that concludes public comment. Thank you for your comments. We will now move to board member and county executive reports. Any board member reports? None? All right. Seeing that, we'll now move to our 9:05 timed item. This is a proclamation of October 2018 as celebrate Placer Grown Month. And who's presenting this? I think there's a... Plethora of proclamations. Shall I read this first, and then we can take your comments? "In a manner of a proclamation declaring October 2018 as celebrate Placer Grown Month in Placer County. Whereas Placer County has been farmed to fork since 1849, when its early settlers discovered the agricultural gold that could be produced utilizing the county's rich soils, pure water, and perfect growing climate. And whereas Placer County agricultural production consists of a diversified range of products, including grains, tree fruits, grapes, livestock, and forest products. And whereas many of the region's top chefs have discovered Placer County's amazing produce and desire to use it in their dishes. And whereas Placer County is home to over 70 farm stands selling a wide variety of fruits, vegetables, and flowers, and has more recently become home to three of the state's first true farm-to-pint breweries, several of which use Placer County citrus, hops, and other Placer grown products in their craft brews. And whereas Placer County mandarins are world famous for their consistent quality, flavor, and dark orange color, and are sought out throughout the United States. And whereas Placer County wineries are consistently given top awards at state, national, and international competitions. And whereas Placer County agricultural products are available through a wide range of outlets, such as farm stands, farmers' markets, local stores, and local restaurants. And whereas the Placer Grown Farm and Barn Tour continues to grow in popularity as more people discover the beauty of rural Placer County and our many farms and ranches. And whereas Placer County local crops and livestock are the source of the highest quality, freshest food available to Placer County residents. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that the above proclamation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer on behalf of the citizens of Placer County at their meeting of October, September 25th, 2018." Do I, I need a motion to approve this? Is there any? It's been moved and seconded to approve the proclamation declaring October 2018 as celebrate Placer Grown Month in Placer County. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Better not be. All right. (laughter) So what I want to do is bring this down to you and present it to you, and then we'll take your comments. Is that ready? All righty.
It's wonderful to be here this morning. Josh Hunsinger, Placer County Agricultural Commissioner. With me is Carol Arnold, the Executive Director of the Placer Grown Organization and our partner in promoting agriculture here in Placer County. We're excited to receive this proclamation today. October is shaping up to be a real celebration of our harvest season. The farmers work hard all year, and it's nice that the, as the season wraps up, to celebrate another year of successful crop and livestock production here in Placer County. As the proclamation mentioned, we have some really great events occurring in the month of October that we want to celebrate. Our Farm and Barn Tour is going on, probably, I think, around 15 years of success. It continues to grow every year. I believe we have about a dozen locations that will be available on that tour for folks this year. We have our Crop to Tabletop Dinner, which is our local farm-to-table dinner. The success of that continues to grow. It actually sold out, and I believe, about 23 hours this year, so that was a little unanticipated that we may need to figure something out next year to either make a few more tickets available or something on that. We also partner with a number of our local farms, such as Machado's in the Bowman area, promoting their apple festival that they do every year, and the Placer County Farm Bureau with their wonderful hoedown event, which raises money for youth in agriculture as well. And so, thank you very much, and, you know, following October, we'll roll right into mandarin season.
All right. Great.
Thank you.
Carol.
Say thank you for your continued support. We couldn't do it without you.
Thank you for all your hard work. Really appreciate it. Now we'll move to our 9:10 timed item. A commendation Arts Council of Placer County's 25th Fall Studios Tour. We're asked to approve and present a commendation in celebration of the Arts Council of Placer County's 25th Fall Arts, Fall Studios Tour. Let me... Good morning, Jim. Good morning. So this is in a matter of a commendation recognizing the Arts Council of Placer County's annual Fall Studios Tour for its 25th year of providing access to local artists in their creative space. Whereas the Arts Council of Placer County first offered a tour of local artists' studios in 1994 as a way to introduce the public to the artist's process and highlight the importance of art in our community. Whereas each artist featured on the tour demonstrates how their work is done with a video, photos, or interactive demonstration, depending upon the medium. Past open studio tours have allowed attendees to watch as artists spin pottery, create glass sculptures, and weave, among other activities. Whereas since the first open studio tour, the event has showcased more than 250 local artists from Colfax to Roseville and everywhere in between, with more than 1,500 people attending each year. In addition to open studios, artwork is displayed at local businesses, both large and small, such as the Galleria at Roseville and the Flower Farm in Loomis. And whereas the tour's popularity has increased over the years, as it has become an opportunity for tour goers to observe artists in their studio environment, discover new art forms, and purchase locally created works. Several artists who have been featured on the tour have continued to have great success with their craft and have gained national and international popularity. And whereas the Arts Council of Placer County and its volunteers and staff work year-round to plan and promote the artist's studio tour, as well as support of art-related activities and programs throughout the county in which highlights the importance of art in our region and promote the many working artists in Placer County. Now therefore, let it be known that the above commendation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer at a regular meeting held September 25th. And now I'll call for a motion and a second. It's moved and seconded to approve the commendation for recognizing the Arts Council of Placer County. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. I'll bring this down to you and present it to you.
And while Jim is bringing, while Jim is bringing that down, I just want to say thank you so much for really expanding your footprints geographically, but not just geographically. I note that in one of the most recent emailings that I got from you, there was a lot of performing arts that was highlighted. And so I'm delighted to see an expansion of, or a recognition, I would say, that we have many, many kinds of arts in Placer County, and that they all are equally important in celebrating. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Appreciate it. How do we run the crew?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I just wanted to thank you very much for your continued support of the arts, and especially for this proclamation today. We are very proud to present our 25th annual tour this year. I was hoping that our founder would be here. She's a member of our advisory team. Helen Phillips started this 25 years ago. And the other person that couldn't be here today, Janet Nicholson, her husband Rick, are the only artists that have been here all 25 years too, so make sure to visit them during the tour. We have 78 artists and 43 locations this year, and five galleries will be showing. So very proud of all the work that our whole crew's done. We do have a few people that were here that I thought would still be up at the podium with me, but they have decided they are too shy for that, and they're going to sit back down. So I'm going to recognize them nonetheless.
Those people are shy.
And that is the truth. We are so lucky to have the volunteers and staff and supporters that we have here at the Arts Council, and so I do appreciate all of your continued support. And I do want to introduce our people here. We have our board member and former Placer County Supervisor Susan Hoag, who is present today. We have a, this is a long one here. This lady's very involved with us. A board member, she's a member of our tour advisory committee, and a former studios tour coordinator, Karen Kilibrus, joining us.
Hey.
We have board member Barbara Burge from Lincoln, who is here today. She's relatively new to our board. I'm very lucky to have her. We have a person who I really want to thank for actually bringing this forward and helping to get this together. She is our super do-all, do-everything person. If you don't know her, I'd be very surprised. I want to recognize one of our tour committee members, Rosie Stillwell.
Hey, Rosie.
And finally, our studio tours advisory committee member and the person who chairs our sponsorship committee, Janet Paley. She's here too, so.
Hi.
Thank you all very much. We hope to see you. We have VIP announcements that we've given out to you, inviting you to our studio Taste of the Tour event on November 1st at Blue Line Galleries. We hope to see you there. Thank you.
Jim, I just want to thank... Jim, I just want to thank you for the relatively short time you've been in this position. You've really come a long way, and I really appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate that, and I do want to reiterate again, it really is a great crew that we have and supporters, and I give all the credit to them, so thank you very much for your efforts.
Smart man. Thanks, Les, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll move to our nine-twenty AM timed item. Health and Human Services Proclamation proclaiming September 2018 as Suicide Prevention Month and supporting, supporting of the Out of Darkness Suicide Prevention Walk. So, come forward and...
Okay. So, good morning, Chairman Holmes and members of the board. I am Amy Ellis, the Director of the Adult System of Care. I am here to ask the board to proclaim September as Suicide Prevention Month and to support the Out of Darkness Suicide Prevention Walk, which will be held on October 6th from 9:00 to 11:30 a.m. at Railhead Park in Auburn. Suicide rates are on the rise across the nation, and there are more than twice the numbers of suicide as there were homicides in 2016. Suicide is impacting most communities, including Placer County. Today, we have some members from the community here to support this issue and help raise awareness. Kevin Dredge, other volunteers from the Children's System of Care Youth Coalition are here to bring some light to suicide prevention efforts and mental health needs for teens in our community. Catherine Holt had brought forward this item as well, with volunteers to promote the Out of Darkness Suicide Prevention Walk happening next Saturday. And now we'll hear the proclamation, and then when we have the picture, I'd like to invite up anybody here to support this item.
Okay. Thanks for giving me a little break. In the matter of a proclamation recognizing September as Suicide Prevention Month and supporting the Out of the Darkness Suicide Prevention Walk in Placer County on October 6th, 2018. Whereas suicide is a tragic end to life, and continues to be one of the fastest-growing epidemics in the United States. Each year, more than forty-four thousand people commit suicide in this country, and Suicide Awareness Month helps raise awareness of this tragic situation. And whereas California experienced over forty-nine thousand suicide attempts and over four thousand suicide deaths annually, with over three hundred suicide attempts and more than two hundred suicides death in Placer County alone. Whereas the stigma associated with mental health conditions can sometimes discourage people at risk for suicide from seeking lifesaving help and causes added trauma and suffering to those who have lost a loved one to suicide. And whereas local agencies and organizations can help individuals and communities overcome this stigma by supporting programs, policies, and events, such as the Out of the Darkness Walk, that help raise awareness of the struggles and impacts associated with mental health issues. And whereas suicide prevention organizations recognize suicide as a preventable public health problem and encouraging communities to make suicide prevention a priority. And whereas because there are multiple causes that lead to suicide, multiple suicide prevention strategies are needed. Initiatives based on the National Strategy for Prevention and the California Strategic Plan on Suicide Prevention are encouraged to increase access to quality mental health, substance abuse, and suicide prevention services. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that the above proclamation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors at its regular meeting held September twenty-five, twenty-fifth, 2018. I'll now ask for a motion. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the, accept the proclamation recognizing September as Suicide Prevention Month and supporting the Out of the Darkness Suicide Prevention Walk in Placer County. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none. Bring this down.
Good morning.
Morning.
First, I wanted to give you a heartfelt gratitude to each and every one of you for being part of this solution. This morning's proclamation represents the future. When you take tragedies and turn them into opportunities, amazing things can happen. You are one of the very few, one of the rare Board of Supervisors in this nation that has issued a proclamation stating that mental health awareness and resources are vital to the members of the county. So for that, I want to thank you. Again, you do this in combination with talking about suicide prevention. Six years ago, we started a walk in Auburn. It was called the Auburn Out of the Darkness Suicide Prevention Walk. Seventy-five people participated. Today, six years later, it's called the Placer County Out of the Darkness Suicide Prevention Walk, with over eight hundred participants now helping Placer, Nevada, and El Dorado County, giving out resources and promoting help, hope, and healing. Together, we have grown the walk with your help. This is the second year that you've issued a proclamation, and we're really excited. We originally started it with the idea of just saving one life. And it has come across to us that we have impacted many lives. It helped numerous people that were contemplating suicide. On behalf of the Placer County Out of the Darkness Suicide Prevention Walk Committee, and on behalf of the Honor Group, and dare I say, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County, thank you. Thank you for bringing hope, healing, and help to so many in our county. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. Please, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, let's recognize the Board of Supervisors with a round of applause. And then supervisors, I'd like you to take a moment to recognize the people in the community that have really been putting forth mental health awareness, resources, and suicide prevention.
Alright, thank you.
Again, thank you so much, and have a blessed day, and we appreciate each and every one of you.
Thank you. Now, it's been brought to my attention that I skipped over one of the more most important items, the nine-fifteen Health and Human Services, but I wanted to make sure that you had plenty of time to present the item. Nice save, huh? So this is the annual report from the Mental Health, Alcohol, and Drug Advisory Board.
Good morning again. Hi, I'm Amy Ellis, and today I'm here with two members, two wonderful members of our Mental Health, Alcohol, and Drug Advisory Board. I'm here with Jeff McClellan and Sharon Behrens, who will be delivering the report. The board is established under Welfare and Institutions Code, Section 5604, to review and advise on mental health and substance use needs within our community. Each year, they summarize their work and recommendations into an annual report that comes to this board for review. This year, they'd like to introduce themselves and provide some highlights of their report. The full report is included in your board packet for review. Jeff and Sharon.
Come forward, please. Morning, Jeff.
I'm Jeff McClellan, and thank you for allowing us time. Happen to be chairman of our committee advisory board, rather. I'm here to tell you about the many dedicated people who serve on this board as in our annual report. We have all seen our families or experienced mental health problems firsthand. Also, please let us know if there's any interest, concern, or issue that we can help you with. The most recent fiscal year board members were Wes Howell, David Bartley, Sharon Behrens, Yvonne Bond, Lisa Catalotto, Dr. Jessica Del Pozo, Elizabeth Matson, myself, Heather Wingo, Diane Wiringa, and of course Supervisor Jim Holmes. We focus on three basic areas via committees: adult care, children's care, and addictions. Here behind me is board member Sharon Behrens, and she will address the children's care after me. I'll address the two other committee subject areas. For adult care, also known as the Adult System of Care Committee, there are many services we review, including county services contracts, addictions, homelessness, medication, Medical, Mental Health Services Act, and patient placements. For the alcohol and misuse drugs and addiction, we track data on service by location, by drug type, people's characteristics, age, sex, and culture. Drug addiction is damn awful. But I've visited many county-funded clinics and seen some remarkable work in progress. I'm personally concerned about alcohol and wish we could do a little bit more. As from the report itself, please go through it. We review and evaluate the best we can. We are volunteers, as I said, we're darn concerned, basically, given our experiences. We have supported our committee trainings and site visits and outreach goals. We've done real well on recruiting people this year. We've got three new board members, and we've paid particular concern to consumers. And Catherine Ferri is in the audience today. She's doing a darn fine job helping to get consumers to actually receive our services to us, and so we can hear them very clearly. I worked on the alcohol and drug committee report in regards to opiate addiction, and we're trying to present a dashboard of statistics. It's easier to read, so you don't have to read these darn long reports. Adding a broader perspective that illicit drug use and alcoholism is tied to multiple impacts. The Adult Services Committee has done a lot of work on housing for severely persistently mentally ill persons, and we've also looked at conservatorships. We've had a lot of events. I want to acknowledge Supervisor Holmes for helping us out greatly. I was asked not to talk about something, so I can't. So instead of talking about it, I'm going to talk about isolated people who are legally isolated first, and I won't go beyond that. But there is another report that was stricken from our report, and many of us feel very strongly about that. I'll let you contact me if you want to know more about that report, but it has to do with the administration of health services for those isolated people. We feel strongly about that and wish that you would look into that when you have time. I'll let Sharon take the rest of my time. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff.
You bet.
Good morning. Over the last few years, a major goal of the Mental Health, Alcohol, and Drug Board has been suicide prevention and increasing awareness within the community of how to access services. Twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, Children's System Committee became aware of a lag in veterans and their families receiving services from the VA and difficulty in knowing how to access other available community services. This is a serious problem nationwide. Amongst veterans, suicide rates are high. According to a 2016 U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs report, rates of suicide have been increasing for both men and women across all age groups in the U.S. However, veterans are twenty-two percent more likely to die by suicide than their adult civilian peers. Among all veterans, this equates to thirty-five point six suicides per hundred thousand population. This is an average of twenty veterans each day die by suicide. My son, a veteran of the Marine Corps, served in Fallujah, Iraq for a year. Out of the group he served with, a significant number have died by suicide. A year ago, my son's best friend in the Marine Corps died by this means. He had waited to be seen for his growing depression several months by the VA. And when he was finally seen, he was told since he's moving, he'd have to get in line again. His family knew of no other resources, since like most veterans, they thought they could only be seen by the VA. He came home and told his wife, "Sometimes people quit trying." He died the next day. After listening to my distraught son, I contacted Amy Ellis, Adult System of Care Director, and Marie Osborne, Assistant Director, to ask, "What services do we offer in Placer, and how do we assist veterans in finding and receiving services?" Out of this one single question, a collaboration was formed with Adult System of Care, Mental Health, Alcohol, and Drug Board, Fallen Soldiers, County Vet Services, Volunteers of America, Veteran Health Administration, Lincoln Community Resource Collaborative, Lighthouse, and veterans themselves. Knowing that there was an unmet need for service access, the collaboration set out to create a way of facilitating knowledge of vet services within the county. From this single collaboration came the development of the Veteran Resource Card. We have now printed ten thousand cards, and since July 2018, eight thousand of these have been distributed. A second printing is currently being completed. Thank you to Placer Adult System of Care for listening to the need, facilitating the collaboration, to the Mental Health Board for supporting the project, and thank you to all the agencies who participated in the development and funding of these cards. It's a job well done. A quote from Margaret Mead says, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world." Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone which make any comments from the audience? I just want to thank Jeff and Sharon for your tireless dedication, and the members of the Mental Health, Drug, and Alcohol Advisory Board. I've sat on that since 2005, and it gives me an understanding of the consumer's point of view, family support, and also from the point of view of practitioners. And it's been very valuable to me as my growth as a supervisor. So, I want to thank you all very much for your participation. Okay, we will now move on. Report, Placer County Fairgrounds Assignment, Assumption, and Operating Agreement. We'll receive an update from the Placer County Fairgrounds, including an annual report from Placer Valley Sports Complex. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mark Rideout, Public Works and Facilities. Very pleased to be here today with this update and annual report. With me in the audience today is David Adaway. He's the CEO of both Placer Valley Tourism and its sister agency, Placer Valley Sports Complex, Inc. David will provide a brief report after my remarks today. As we've discussed in the past, the county owns the sixty-one acre Placer County Fairgrounds property in the city of Roseville, and it's now operated by PVSC. They continue to hold a variety of events at the property. They operate the Speedway, and they produce the annual county fair. And this transition in operations was initially directed by your board October 11th, 2016, when you directed staff to negotiate with PVT. This follows the comprehensive analysis produced by the RCH Group. And in addition to the economic analysis and really looking at what the nature of fairs are and what they, how they benefit the community, they also recommended your board form the eleven-member Fairgrounds Revitalization Committee. That group, they met twenty-one times. They discussed the future of the fair and the fairgrounds, and ultimately recommended to keep the fairgrounds at this site. We negotiated with PVSC to incorporate the FRC's vision, to celebrate agriculture. And we looked at how it can enrich youth by teaching them leadership and self-sufficiency. And looking at operating the fairgrounds in a way that would recognize the best of the best in a self-sustaining manner. To look at opportunities to build community connections, to look at the service organizations and different groups within the county to bring them together at the fairgrounds, and focus on an authentic county fair that celebrates all things made in Placer. I want to thank the FRC. A couple of them are here in the audience today. They really did a tireless job that I think resulted in an outstanding model that's being discussed around the country. The Assignment, Assumption Operating Agreement, again, it was approved by your board in March of last year. It was assigned by PVT to its sister entity, PVSC, last year. And the thirty-five-year term is for most of the property. I'll note that the Speedway is approximately a fifteen-year term. We're partway through the projects that are authorized by that agreement. So the operational turnover specified by the AAO occurred last July. On the fifth of July, the repairs project commenced, and the work was completed in about ten months. That was in time for the holiday gatherings last year and a gala in January of 2018. These are solid buildings, the two... The two large halls on the property are poured-in-place concrete, and they're worth reinvesting in. We found in the upper left-hand slide, three layers of paint covering glading McBean tile. In the one to the right, there was a drop ceiling in Jones Hall that hid a beautiful wood ceiling. ADA improvements were made to the site, and the Johnson Commercial Kitchen was completely redone. The paint stripping on Johnson, or Jones Hall continued for three weeks through September of last year. There was a gentleman up there in the sun, and I'd like to thank him personally for his hard work. We set local granite out into the site. We took care of challenges that the 50-year-old infrastructure had, put everything back together. We're fortunate to have some expert concrete work that I hope you've all seen at the site. The Jones ceiling was really celebrated by uncovering the beautiful wood structure. Now there's state-of-the-art lighting for trade shows and color change features that make special events, you know, that much nicer. We have state-of-the-art air conditioning at this point, and it all came together. Landscaping was put together. The garden room was kind of an unsuspected treasure that served as a really intimate space for gatherings and corporate events. And as I mentioned, there was this gala last January, or this January, rather, and it was hard to believe that all that was accomplished in such a short period of time. In the annual PVSC report, you'll hear how they continue to rent the facility for private and community events, that they license portions of the property to groups like the Roseville Community Preschool, and they have an agreement with the Speedway operator, and they closely monitor that operation. We're now evaluating the potential. Some future projects may come to the site, including 190,000-square-foot indoor sports and events center. That's the large yellow building on the slide. It may host different types of sports tournaments, practices, trade shows, and graduations. Another component being studied by that EIR is a 6,000-square-foot culinary facility. That's the smaller yellow box at the top of the slide. We're looking at having culinary events, and there may be a for-rent commercial kitchen that farmers potentially could use to package and process their produce. So for this project, we're currently in the draft EIR review period. That closes the 8th of October. We did have a public comment meeting on September 17 at the fairgrounds, received comments at that time. And we're looking to return to your Board later this year with a separate presentation on this project and the potential it may bring to the county. So with that, it's my pleasure to introduce David Adaway. He can take you through the annual report that they've prepared, and we're both here to answer any questions you may have.
Hi, David.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Holmes. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. It's a pleasure to be here. It seems like a very short time ago, about 18 months, when we stood up here and said we had a concept that you agreed with, and we got to work on it. So, oh, I get the clicker. All right. Mark stole about 90% of my thunder, so I'll just say ditto or something like that. But what's really important for us was that we wanted to reinsert the Placer into the grounds. And through that, we did it several ways. Mark pointed out the glady McBean tiles that were saved, the granite pieces that are down there, weaving the fabric of this great county back into this site, because the site is wonderful. And if you haven't had a chance to experience one of the events there, it is magnificent. But also as part of that, we wanted to enhance the fair to, again, allow more opportunity for participants from the county, as well as focus on the excellence that is created in this county. And so, but in doing that, we moved the youth and adult still exhibits into Jones Hall, dramatically expanding the amount of space we had. We quadrupled the youth entries this year, and more people visited the hall because of the exposure than they've ever had in the past, because we started getting comments like, "I didn't know this was open for other people. I could have brought something here." Or we had a teacher come by, "My kids didn't have any entries in this. We're going to do it next year." So the enthusiasm and the exposure of God, I think, is going to take this to the next level. Also, very important is the livestock component. I've learned a lot about livestock that I did not know, and still have more to learn. But it is amazing. It's not really about the livestock for me. It's about what's happening to our youth and what they learn and the responsibilities that they take. PVT bought five animals at the auction. You know, we are fully committed and supportive of this. Mark did not mention that we redid all of the barns and created a space that we think is very exciting and more to come in the future. Most importantly, the small animal barn was totally updated, and it's really now the Lee Bastian Small Animal Barn. If you don't know Lee, which I'm sure you probably all do, his commitment to our youth and his commitment to the fair is undeniable, so we were happy to do that. Plus, it's now painted as a freshly red barn. But more important, we didn't lose any animal, any small animals this year, because we have in the past few years due to heat. So for us, that was one of our, one of our charges, is to make sure that that did not happen anymore. So Mark went through briefly the timeline. The only correction I would make to what I'm showing you here is, May 1, site renovations are not complete. We understand in an 80-year-old facility, we're going to be renovating for quite some time. And I had the pleasure and honor of our Board having their Board Retreat at the grounds yesterday in the beautiful garden room, and they're excited about where we're headed, and they're excited about their continued commitment to this project. The important date there is October 6, 2017, so within 90 days, we completed the renovation of Jones Hall. And why was that important? Because it was the 37th Annual AKC Dog Show. We did not want to lose any of our heritage. We did not want to lose any of our commitment, so that was a very exciting time for all of us. Three months operationally, we have increased the number of events. We're bringing events back, and again, PVT's overall mission is to generate room nights, so we're tracking the room nights as we continue that movement. One of the things that's not listed here that's important, I live in this neighborhood, and it is a neighborhood that has, we are socially, economically challenged in certain parts of the area. And so programs that happen there, like Placer County's immunization program, provided free to our kids in our area, amazing. We also did an event with one of the radio stations called Hoptopia, which had free Easter eggs. Everything was free that came in. A lot of our neighborhood kids could walk there with their families, so. And the radio station had 75,000 Easter eggs, and next year, they want to do 125,000. We had about 4,000 people come through the event. Anyway, Mark talked to you about the Blue Heart International Snow, Snowflake Ball. This is about 300 bucks a seat for this type of event, a quality event that never could have come to us until we did those renovations. We've done various animal shows, concerts. We featured, again, with a partnership with the radio station, we had Jewel, and we did an '80s concert, too. So we've got some, a lot of opportunities. And you can also see we're bringing people back, people who used to be there. So the Roseville Fireman's Crab Feed did not leave the Roseville area. They were having to because they needed more space. So they're back, and they're doing an amazing job. Roseville 2018, which is the largest chamber-sponsored event, brought all kinds of business executives through the site, and it used to be been there back in the, in the late 1900s. So we're bringing people back who haven't been able to enjoy the facility without the upgrades. Again, focusing on local partnerships. We did a deal with Bill McAnally Racing. We told you that was our intentions from the get-go, but at the same time, we modified it. So we've reduced the number of motorsports by 40%, but working with Bill, who's an amazing quality promoter. He has quintupled, or whatever the figure is for eight times the average attendance to events, so we're doing fewer, better, and more participating events. Randy Peters, local caterer, if you haven't come and had the fried bologna sandwich, mark your calendars, because they're a local group, and it's worth it. And we're just getting rave reviews from everybody as we continue to move forward. We certainly have some learning to do. We have some modifications to do, but we're really excited about that space, and we thank you for your ability to allow us to have this happen. Mark did not mention a piece of thunder. For the Sacramento Business Journal, this project was selected as one of the outstanding real estate projects for the year. And what you're going to see, that he did allude to, this public-private model. You know, I was at a conference where we presented it to other CVBs. It's, it's going to take hold, and you're going to see some response like you haven't seen before. So again, thank you for your trust, your faith, and mostly your staff. They've been amazing. We could not have done this. Mark has been terrific, Ken, the whole team, and Mr. Sandman. So again, thank you. We'll look for you at next year's fair, too.
All right. Thank you. Are you done, Mike? Is, did you have any?
No, if you have questions for us.
Any questions, comments? Supervisor Grant?
More comment than a question, I have the pleasure of representing our Board on the American City-County Exchange, which is a collaboration of city and county-elected officials from across the country, looking for free-market solutions to public sector problems. And one of the topics of conversation at our last conference was reuse of county facilities, specifically fairgrounds. And I had the opportunity to present, and you didn't even know this, because I didn't have to bug you for pictures and stuff, because we had enough, had the opportunity to present a lot of the pictures and the tremendous success story of the private sector engaging with the public sector under your leadership to, to bring this, bring this about. So as I start to get inbound phone calls from people asking, "Now, what was that again, and how did you guys do it again?" I'll probably just be kicking them your way, because you guys are the ones that actually made it happen. So thank you very much for your work on this.
Thanks, Brett. Supervisor Grant?
Yeah, I want to thank you for bringing this forward, and also, as David mentioned, you know, over the years, staff has taken a lot of arrows from outside jurisdictions about the fairgrounds. It's location, noise, all kinds of different things. And through my experience over the last eight years, you've done a tremendous job about outreach to the community and working with different resident groups to make things a lot better. And what we're seeing here is a couple of things. Number one, this was really a community-driven project. Once we were able to get the other jurisdiction to back off and allow them, allow citizens to actually drive this, people of the, that are in, are part of the committee here, that's how things happened. And that's really the genesis, and that's really the, the positive, you know, statement here, is that when people come together around a project and a shared vision, things happen really fast. And when you go back to that timeline, it's almost unheard of, that, you know, for the last eight years, we've been throwing slings and arrows, you know, at this other jurisdiction back and forth, but when the minute and the second people come together over something that they see a positive in it, it accelerates to just incredible. All the roadblocks, all the BS, all that stuff goes away, and stuff happens. So I want to thank all of you for, you know, your efforts, and I also want to thank the city of Roseville for coming in and seeing the light and seeing that this would be more of a good thing for the city than it really is for the county. But at the end of the day, everybody that is a resident, irrespective of whether you're city or county, has a vested interest in that site. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Grant. Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, I want to say thank you both to facility staff and to Dave and to all your team, because I think we can all agree that the fairgrounds, not for lack of the Board's efforts in the past, had really fallen into a pretty sad state. And as Jack indicated, we were kind of at odds with the city. We were kind of at odds with the local community. And by making this a really robust public process around a county-owned asset, we got to a really good place. I got, unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it to the fair this year, but I will be there next year. But, you know, I got great feedback from people about how different it felt, just really in sort of 18 months. And really, I just want to say thank you, because it would have been, honestly, just a really sad day had the county said, "We just can't run a county fair anymore. This is just something, you know, that its time has come and gone, and we've moved on as a county." But I think your commitment to the agricultural piece of it and continuing the commitment to really focus on Placer-grown, Placer-made, Placer-place-based stuff, I think is really just going to create a better, stronger, more vibrant fair in the years to come. So thank you. Much appreciated.
And I too want to thank you for the amazing transformation in this short period of time. I've been to several events down there now. Now it's a go-to place. We've really come a long way, and I just want to thank you all for your hard work, and the Revitalization Committee for their work in trying to move this forward. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the Board on this item? I see someone up in Tahoe. Is there anything that Tahoe has to comment on? Seeing none. Thank you very much for your presentation. Now, we're asked to move to the 9:45 timed item. Public Works and Facilities/Community Development Resource Agency established Zone of Benefit Number 221 in County Service Area 28, Timberline at Auburn Subdivision.
Good morning. Bob Costa, Department of Public Works and Facilities. This morning, we're asking you to consider two matters related to the Timberline at Auburn Subdivision. I'll present the first portion regarding formation of a county service area zone of benefit, and Leslie Amesbury with Community Development will address the second portion regarding final map approval and acceptance of improvements. Timberline at Auburn Subdivision is a planned 94-acre continuing care retirement community approved for 858 residential units and commercial facilities on 54 lots located on Richardson Drive north of Bell Road in the North Auburn area. Conditions of approval for the project require formation of a county service area zone of benefit to fund long-term maintenance of onsite portions of Richardson Drive, Education Street, Horst Drive, together with associated street lighting, drainage facilities, and public trails. These roads will be accepted into the county's maintained mileage system. An engineer's report has been prepared in support of the zone of benefit proposal detailing the annual charges based upon planned development phasing. Proposed change, charges by parcel vary based on the number of residential or commercial units and the overall project phasing, with a maximum annual charge of up to $9,685 for one of the Phase 1 parcels approved for 160 senior housing units. That equates to an annual rate of $60.53 per housing unit. A ballot has been prepared and sent to the property owner, Timberline Village LLC, and the owner has executed a waiver of notice. So we're recommending that your, that your Board take the following actions today. First, conduct a public hearing, consider all protests, and tabulate ballots. And if it's supported, adopt a resolution establishing Zone of Benefit Number 221 and setting annual charges of up to $9,685 per parcel to provide for public road lighting, trails, and storm drain maintenance at the Timberline at Auburn Subdivision. Any questions?
Any question, comments before I open up the public hearing? All right. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wish to address the item, this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we're being asked to adopt a resolution creating Zone of Benefit Number 221.
First, have to tabulate.
Oh, that's right, we have to tabulate the votes.
Vote.
One ballot in favor.
One ballot in favor. All right. So I guess the vote passed.
That's why we look at you, Jim, for our advice.
All right. So now, we'll be asked to adopt a resolution creating Zone of Benefit Number 221.
Second.
It's been moved in second to create the Zone of Benefit Number 221 and setting charges to provide funding for public street lighting, road maintenance, storm drain maintenance, and the onsite public trails maintenance for Timberline at Auburn Subdivision. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. I'll now move to Item B, Timberline at Auburn Subdivision Phase 1 Final Map. Authorize the Chair to sign the Timberline at Auburn Phase 1 Final Map and the two subdivision improvement agreements. Is there, oh, it's you, Leslie.
Yes. Good morning, Chairman Holmes and members of the Board. This is the Timberline at Auburn Phase 1 Final Map and Acceptance of Improvements. As Bob mentioned, the Timberline project is a retirement community approved for 54 lots on- on the 94 acres with up to 858 residential units, commercial uses, and recreational facilities. This Phase 1 Final Map will create four lots on 10 acres with up to 188 residential units consisting of duplexes, single-family homes, and independent care apartments. The streets in Timberline are private with maintenance provided by a property owners' association. The public street extensions and public trails within Timberline maintenance will be funded by County Service Area Zone of Benefit 221, which you've just approved. Creation of that zone of benefit was a condition of approval for this project. This final map does have two subdivision improvement agreements. The first agreement covers the warranty and lien periods for the onsite improvements, which are complete. And the second agreement covers improvements to an offsite sewer line, which are not complete yet. But these improvements are needed to provide sewer service to the proposed independent care apartments. Developer has posted separate securities with each of these agreements and has met the conditions of approval for Phase 1. So, at this time, we are requesting the approval of the Timberline at Auburn Phase 1 Final Map and the two subdivision improvement agreements and acceptance of the onsite improvements as complete and to adopt a resolution accepting the public street extensions, which are Richardson Drive and Education Street into the county's maintained mileage system.
Okay. Any comments from board members? Seeing none, anyone in the audience wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, I'll ask, bring it back to the board for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve item 6B, Timberline at Auburn Subdivision Phase 1 Final Map. Authorize chair to sign the Timberline at Auburn Phase 1 Final Map and two subdivision improvement agreements, accept the onsite improvements as complete, and adopt a resolution accepting the .06-mile extension of Richardson Drive and the .04-mile extension of Education Street into the county maintained mileage system. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item is moved. Thank you very much. Now, we will move to the 10:00 AM Community Development Research Agency, Dry Creek West Placer Community Amendment to the Land Use Diagram.
Good morning. Jennifer Bias, Planning Services Division, here to present what we consider a cleanup to the Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan. The land use community plan is located out in West Placer. It does appear this exhibit is a little difficult to read, but it's 9,200 acres. To the north is Baseline Road. Sutter County to the west. Sacramento County to the south, and the City of Roseville to the east. This specific plan amendment does two things. The first, it changes the land use diagram colors for Placer Vineyard Specific Plan, which is shown on this diagram in front of you as blue, and also the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan, which is shown on this diagram in a teal color, to be one solid color representing the specific plan areas that we adopted. As you recall, in 2007 and 2009, when these specific plans were adopted, they had land use diagrams and development standards that are specific to this area. However, our community plan was never amended at that point to reflect the cleanup, or excuse me, to reflect those changes. So, this amendment is just a cleanup to point to those adopted specific plan and development standards. The second item that we're doing here is replacing a portion of a resolution 94-238 that had an exhibit attached to it. The replacing resolution will reference the specific plan, the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan, but it's leaving two items in place, which had to do with agriculture, water, as well as phasing of the specific plan. For Sequa, these items were considered covered under the 2007 and 2009 environmental reviews that went forward with each of these specific plan amendments, or specific plan approvals. So, this action today we're looking at was covered when those were approved. The item did go to the West Placer MAC. The MAC ultimately supported the recommendation to make this amendment. And in addition, the item also went for the Planning Commission. At the Planning Commission, we did have public comment presented by Michael Garabedian, representing the Placer Group Sierra Club, relating to the existing rail yards as it relates to air quality for Sequa and public safety. This is not new significant information. The rail yards are existing condition today. Therefore, we do not require additional Sequa to be completed with this action. This item is a public hearing, so staff is bringing forward the recommendation from the Planning Commission today. And that's the second slide we have here, is our recommendation, but we will, available for any comments.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Supervisor Durant.
Yeah, I just want to confirm with our legal counsel that that's correct, that by taking this action, we're not affecting any, we're not reopening anything with regards to Sequa is concerned. All the analysis that took place in 2006 and 2007 is, still remains the same. None of that's being changed, and that this doesn't have an effect of...
Well, in fact, this is a discretionary action. It is subject to Sequa. What staff conducted was the analysis, it's appropriate under Sequa to look at the existing environmental review and to determine under Sequa Guidelines, Section 15162, if there are any significant new impacts or new information that would merit subsequent environmental review. The conclusion made was there is not and is being brought forward in reliance on those previously certified EIRs. And I would conclude there is nothing that has been brought up at the Planning Commission that would change that determination. Mr. Garabedian, bring up the issue of the rail yard. That's an existing condition. We did not find it to fall under the significant new information criteria, and therefore, we bring it forward based on the prior certified EIRs.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that on the record.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Let's see. I have to, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open up the public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to address the board on this item?
Good morning. Mike Garabedian for Placer Group Sierra Club. We're delighted to learn about your concern about Sequa. Our emphasis there and now is on your duty to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. We supported the mitigation that was in the Placer Vineyards before, though it's been a change. And so, there are several issues here that bring up the question of public health. And we've discussed them before, but to mention them in passing, the original amount of parks, park, and open space were reduced, certainly an health issue. The area that was originally not permitted for some because of the high voltage power lines and electromagnetic facilities, we've discussed factors there, though it's not proven that can affect people. So, the emphasis at this point, especially because of the nearness to the rail yards, is that there are concentric rings of cancer rate and heavy particulate matter. Now, interestingly enough, one of the members of the Planning Commission pointed out, hey, it's in that area. And there used to be a committee in Roseville, meeting from time to time to work on that, but that no longer was. Now, our suggestion to the Planning Commission and to you is that there is a need for you to be involved in that effort. Now, one of the possibilities for that is the state ARB has put together a freight facilities, a freight center project, to use all of the state of California authority it can to regulate pollution, affect pollution from the rail yards. And we would hope you would be aware of that, and the county would be involved in it. So, there is a question here of reviving old projects and how long they lie in wait. And here is an old one. It is something that brings up questions of transit. You know, things have changed about transit. How well is transit going to be integrated into this? There is the need for housing, housing of all ranges of income people. And I've noticed in some of these that there have been, there has from previous, been some of these renewals or extensions have, look to me like they have added some affordable housing requirements. The agriculture, the, and these, the green belts in these developments between cities are important. But then, there's also this question of demand. You know, we've, in the unincorporated area alone, something like 25,000 units, I guess about 14,000, 15,000 alone in Placer Vineyards, have been entitled. And meanwhile, we're working on entitling thousands and thousands of more. There is, there is an issue there about throwing them all out there. Of course, if a project fails, the developers don't lose money, the bank might lose money, at least ones I've heard about. So, there's a real question of whether we should be doing these. Look at that demand question. And finally, the, as you remember on the Placer County Transportation Agency knows, the executive director of SECOG came and made a presentation and discussed the fact that the state ARB is telling, is, has increased the requirements for reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. And along with that, that factor being taken into account is the potential loss of state money. So, there are all these reasons that when these old chestnuts come along, and we look at them again, that we should be looking at the questions of public health, safety, and welfare and costs. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I do have a comment, Mr. Garabedian. You know, when I came into, when I was elected and took my seat in 2011, a couple of months after I took my seat, we, the Sierra Club, had previously sued Placer Vineyards, and the City of Roseville previously sued Placer Vineyards. And as a result of that, they changed the MMRP, the mitigations to that particular area. So, I find it kind of ironic that after we settled this lawsuit and everybody spent a lot of money, the Sierra Club has the gall to come back here and raise concerns that were addressed almost eight years ago. I don't see anything in here that is new. Technologies have changed, and as a matter of fact, they've probably gotten better with regards to transit. This is the first, I think, development in the county that is going to be, have all of their affordable housing built onsite. So, I'm not seeing what, you know, buying what you're selling. So...
County council has a comment.
Well, thank you.
I would just add for the record, Mr. Garabedian brought up changes. As the board may recall, in 2015, both Placer Vineyards and Riola Vineyards came back for updates to their plans. Those updates were approved by this board. The Sequa determination was addendum in both cases. So, therefore, the issues of reduced parks, changes in the land plan were dealt with in 2015. There were no losses brought to that. The issue of EMF was also brought up at a separate time. It was approved to change the MMRP based on an addendum that also was not challenged.
Great. And, Mr. Garabedian, I just want to say for the record, I appreciate, you know, what you do, and I appreciate what your group does, because there are certain instances where some projects go through, and they're rapid projects. But this one has been vetted and vetted and vetted again. And, you know, I think there's an old adage that you need to pick your battles, and this isn't a good one, I think.
We're not here to fight, sir. As I noted at the beginning, in fact, we are bound to say that we support the mitigation measures that you're talking about. Now, you have changed some of them, and when they were changed, we were there in 2015 raising that point. And so, the real question here is the piling up of all, and how we deal with these renewals, the extensions, where you have some authority when you're extending times that may apply, but especially with new projects coming along.
Thank you, Mr. Garabedian.
So, we're talking about this general issue, and your comments are well-taken, but we're not here to talk about Sequa today as much as you would like to.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the board on this item, under the public hearing? All righty. We will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action. Okay. We've got item 7A, 1, 2, and 3. Conduct a public hearing. Find the previously certified environmental impact reports for the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan and the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan adequate for the proposed amendment to the Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan? And 3, adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan Land Use Diagram. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The item has moved. We'll now move to our 10:15 timed item. This is Community Development Resource Agency. We're to do a, an appeal of Planning Commission's denial of appeal for FTCRA LLC.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Real quick, just a quick introduction. Did you have already with Planning Services Division? Like you mentioned, this is an appeal of a denial of a variance. What I would like to do first, though, make an introduction. This is Mr. Patrick Dobbs. He is a senior planner for the Planning Division, and he will be presenting this item today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. I'm Patrick Dobbs from Planning Services Division, and the next item is an appeal filed by the applicant, Ms. Kristi Dawn, on behalf of FTCRA Limited Liability Company. This is an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to deny the appeal and uphold the zoning administrator's decision to deny the variances requested for three existing or as-built unpermitted structures. Property is located at 10385 Atwood Road in North Auburn. It's about a mile southwest of the DeWitt Government Center. These are both aerial photos of the property from above. The photo on the right is taken more recently. The picture on the left, for comparison, is from 2010. The property is an acre and a half. It is developed with an existing single-family dwelling and onsite wastewater septic system. The topography is relatively flat. The zoning is residential agriculture with a 2.3-acre minimum parcel size. Surrounding properties are similarly developed with low-density residences and accessory structures that have the same building setbacks as the subject parcel. The picture on the right, I've highlighted the three unpermitted as-built improvements that require variances that the Planning Commission and zoning administrator have denied and are the subject of today's appeal. The yellow boxes represent two structures that are built within the 30-foot side yard setback. In the middle there is the 898-square-foot covered patio. On the top is the 900-square-foot second dwelling unit. This is constructed on a second story of a detached garage, so the total building size is 1,800 square feet. And the third improvement is down along the roadway on Atwood Road. This is an eight-foot-tall privacy fence built in the front setback. This is what the improvements look like on the ground. First, the 898-square-foot covered patio. It's single-story. It's attached to the existing single-family dwelling, and at its closest point is located approximately seven feet from the east property line, again, where 30 feet would typically be required. The second improvement is, this is the 30-by-30-foot two-story second dwelling unit above the detached garage. This is approximately 14 and a half feet from the side property line. And the third and final improvement is an approximately eight-foot-tall privacy fence built within the 50-foot front setback. Maximum height for solid or opaque fences in the front setback is three feet. The application for the variances is in response to code violation in December of 2016, and we received a response, or complaint from the public regarding unauthorized construction activity at the property. We mailed a notice to the property owner, asking them to contact us to discuss the complaint. There was no response from the property owner. We followed up with a notice of violation in August of 2017 and asked the property owner to remove the structures or apply for building permits, because the covered patio in the second unit were located within the setback. Not only were building permits required, but the variance is also required. During a follow-up inspection, our co-compliance officer spoke with the applicant's contractor, Rick Ladd, and advised them to stop working on the project. However, construction activity continued to commence. In September of 2017, we received a survey from the applicant, and two months later, the variance application was submitted. This is the third public hearing for this item. The variance request was first heard by the zoning administrator on March 15th. Prior to the hearing, we received a comment letter from a neighboring property owner that the unpermitted septic system in the illegal second unit had overflowed during a heavy storm, and effluent had discharged onto the neighboring property. The appellant disputes this claim that the septic failed and contends that the improvements were all completely built prior to her ownership of the LLC. Licensed contractors have looked at the work and have verified that everything's built to code, and she's become more aware of... As she's become more aware of setbacks in her surroundings, she's noticed in the neighborhood there are many other non-conforming structures that she thinks are likely not permitted and look dangerous, and so she feels she's unfairly been singled out. And she does want to comply, this has been a costly and stressful process. The applicant hired a septic, the, the first hearing, I'm sorry, was continued to allow the applicant time to work with environmental health, to determine if a septic system meeting public health and safety requirements could be constructed to support the second dwelling unit. The applicant hired a septic consultant, they tested the soils and all of the, and concluded that none of the tested areas were suitable for any type of permitted septic system in Placer County. So the project came back to the zoning administrator on April 19th, zoning administrator denied the variances, and in doing so, he determined that there are no special circumstances to the property, size, shape, or topography, to justify the variances. And according to the county's Environmental Health Department, there is, at this point in time, there's no realistic sewer, sewage option for the second unit to increase the, accommodate the increased residential living. The applicant appealed the zoning administrator's denial to the Planning Commission, and on July 12th, the Planning Commission unanimously denied the appeal in variances. In the applicant's letter of appeal, it's included as a attachment, she's outlined the steps that they are taking to correct this matter, including disconnecting the existing septic system, you can see the tanks been removed, they've suggested removing the second-story windows that peer over into the neighboring property. They've obtained bids to jack up the structure, the detached structure, move it, to comply with setbacks, apologize. And they want to obtain the necessary building permits. You received a checklist of items recently from dated November, or September 19th, where they've kinda outlined the steps they've taken to correct the violation, and this is a good faith effort on their part, it does partially remedy the, the violation, but not completely. This appeal hearing was properly noticed, and no new public comments were received. Staff is recommending the board of supervisors deny the project, there are 2 actions we ask of you, to deny the appeal filed by Kristi Dawn on behalf of FTCRA LLC, and to uphold the Planning Commission's decision to deny the appeal and uphold the zoning administrator's action to deny the variance requests supported by the findings contained in the staff report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my colleagues from Environmental Health and Code Compliance are here today, and we can answer your questions.
All righty, thank you. Any questions from board members before I open up the public hearing? Supervisor Montgomery?
Patrick, thank you. And I, I just wanna make sure that I understand that there are really 3 issues in front of us today. The first is, the secondary dwelling unit is both in the setback, and there is not adequate sewer capacity to serve it, even if it should be moved.
That, that's correct.
That's one. The second is the fence, which is an 8-foot solid fence with then a sort of lattice work or something on top of it.
That's correct.
What, and, and that's both too tall and in the setback?
It's too tall for its location in the front setback.
Okay. What is an appropriate height for that fence?
Well, 3 feet is the standard, we, it, it depends on site distance and, and safety in pulling in and out of the driveway, there really aren't a lot of safety issues. It is a busy road, but, you know, not having seen it on the plans, we're not exactly sure if it's in the right of way, which would require an encroachment permit, or if it's on their property, but 3 to 4 feet is probably appropriate.
And then, just real quick, the caveat to that is if it's an open fence, I think they can go up to 6 feet, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Okay.
As opposed to a solid fence.
Great. And then the third issue is the covered patio, which is both in the setback, and it's covered. Is, is it being covered, what is the issue, or is it that it's in the setback is the issue?
The issue is that it's in the setback, it's the, it's the structure.
So if it were just a, you know, flat paved patio, would be permissible in the setback or not?
I, I believe so, typically that earth, you know, two-dimensional patios and such can encroach.
If you go back to that slide, there's one slide that shows a patio real good. The patio structure itself, any type of patio structure, that's considered a structure, there it is there, would have to be removed, but if you want a hardscape patio, that, that would be permissible.
So if, if everything above ground level were removed, the patio would be fine?
Correct. And to meet the setback, I believe that entire patio structure would have to be removed, if I'm not mistaken, or at least the majority of it.
Okay, thank you, I was just really trying to understand the, the context of each of these different issues. Thank you.
And there's a permit required, there wasn't any permit?
Oh, and no permits.
Yeah, right, okay. Supervisor Grant?
Yeah, you know, every once in a while, I've got a client that comes in, and I give him advice, and I tell him, you know, th, th, this is what you ought to do. And invariably, they'll say, you know what, I'm gonna go ahead and, and do this on my own. And 6, 7 months later, they come back, and now it costs them, now, now my, my quote is 3 times as much, because I have to go and now undo everything that they've done, which if they would've followed my advice in the first place, they would've gotten both their issue resolved, and it would've been at a cheaper price. So, I'm just baffled.
Yes, I, I think the applicant would agree, this has been a costly lesson.
Supervisor Ure has a comment.
So, the existing onsite sewage disposal is a traditional septic-type system?
That's correct, it's quite, all the details are a little sketchy, but yes.
Okay. And it's been determined that no kind of system, engineered system, would have sufficient leach and repair area on this parcel?
That's my understanding, based on the results of, of the soils test, that no, no system that Placer County will permit. As I said, I've got my colleagues from Environmental Health that can speak to some of the details.
And, and is, is that, pardon me, is that as a result of the additional living space, or are we now in a situation where because of the violation, we've now become aware of a failure of the existing structure, and, and the inability for that system to accommodate the existing structure, and we simply have a failure of the onsite septic disposal, regardless of the additional living space?
There's no evidence that the existing system has, has failed, but there's some question as to whether it's still functioning appropriately, but, you know, that, that's not a result of the additional building.
Okay. So I, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, is, is it the, is it the additional living space that triggered a concern about capacity for onsite disposal, as opposed to no, we had a, some kind of an event that their system failed? And regardless of whether we have any of these 3 violations, we have a failed system? Because that, that to me is an entirely separate issue at this point.
Morning, sir.
Good morning. I'm guessing you came up here because you have an answer.
There's a little button there to switch you, yeah.
Honorable Board, Kurt Zuma, manager of Environmental Health. The existing onsite septic system is grandfathered in, and was observed to be functioning properly when we visited the site.
Okay.
We did 5 soil test pits on that acre and a half, to determine if there was any capacity for a new system that was installed without a permit, or to expand the existing septic system, there was not.
So I'm, I'm sorry, so when they built the new structure with the new living space, did they tie into the existing system, or did they actually place a new system?
Our understanding is that it was a new system, and they have since removed the tank that was part of the presentation, it's sitting on the ground surface, so they installed a separate system, and did not impact their existing grandfathered-in septic system for the house.
Okay. And, and the concern is the new system does not have the, the existing capacity for leach and repair to meet the conditions required for the, the new living area?
Correct. We looked at if there was capacity on the site to install a new system for the second dwelling, and we also looked to see if there was acceptable area to expand the
Existing
Previously existing septic system, and neither was an option.
Okay, all right. So, but, but we do, we don't, we do not find ourselves in a situation where essentially you have all waste systems onsite having failed, and now we have to red-tag the existing living, this is, this is solely tied to the expansion of the living space onsite?
That is correct.
Okay, good, thank you, that helps.
All righty. Supervisor Grant, you got another comment?
Yeah, I had another question. Following Kirk's thought process, what was the original septic designed for? How many persons?
It appears that it's a 2-bedroom septic system, so that would be approximately 4, is what the estimate was back in the day.
Okay, and how far back are we talking about?
1938.
Oh, okay, so we're talking about a pretty ancient, at least technology-wise, system.
And Conventional.
How many persons are they going to up the, with the new building?
I, I wasn't aware what their plans were, 'cause it didn't get past the point of there's no capacity or option to install a new system.
What if there was no one living there? Would there be any issue?
Well, they've satisfied environmental health concern, mostly by removing that septic system.
By detaching the
Right, there's still some plumbing that would need to be removed at the time of the building permit.
Okay, and there's nothing improvement-wise to the actual ground that can be done, or that you're aware of?
That's correct.
That can make it, they, they can't dig a bigger hole and reinforce it with concrete or, or anything like that?
They would need to pump to an easement offsite, or to, if there's sewer available.
Okay, and is there, where's the closest sewer?
Not close enough to be
Not close enough, okay, all right. Affordable to do it, 'cause I, we had a similar situation, I'm sure you're aware of, in, in West Placer, where the developer of a development didn't extend the pipe 80 feet, and, you know, it was gonna end up costing my constituent $80,000 to run a line out there, so anyways, okay, all right, thank you.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, thank you, so I wanna, I think maybe both of you are gonna answer this. So, the garage on the ground floor and what was intended to be a living space above, the living space now is not legally occupiable as a living space, let's pretend it was all permitted correctly, but now it doesn't have sewer capacity of any description, correct?
That's my understanding, correct.
Okay, so that cannot be inhabited by anyone under our code, because it does not have sewage disposal. I think that's a CEDRIO question, not a U question, thank you.
That's correct.
Okay. So, if, for example, that building were to be relocated out of the setback, and placed somewhere else on the property, it could theoretically be used for like an artist's space, or something, you could go up there and create art and go into the house to visit the restroom.
That's correct, storage, art, artist loft, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments before I open up the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing, is the applicant or the appellant here have to? Morning.
Morning. Steve Mackey from FTCRA. Rick Ladd did, did some work on the house, not the extension, but was there cleaning up some of stuff, and that's when code enforcement came in, so I'm here to help him comply and get this thing right. Plans drawn up, we've applied to everything that code enforcement's asked, and after this, I have a meeting with the stale to get the plans approved and move forward with the building.
Okay.
Just kinda going back to when this, when this initiated and, and the steps that we've taken, this thing's kinda taken a different path along the, the different appeal process. Unfortunately, every time we've appealed, or appeared to tell our story, it's been diverted with other comments in regards to the septic system, or, or we, we had a hearing it in place, and, and then it got diverted to something else, so each time that there's been an appeal, we haven't been able to actually voice our side of the story. With that being said, we've made every valiant effort to comply and, and bring this thing to standards, and, you know, kinda put this behind us for best interest of our family and everybody involved. So, what we come to you today asking is, is because we did pay for, in, in, on top of all the other expenditures that we spent, permits and complying with things, we paid a survey company to come out and survey the property, finding out that we actually own upwards of
27 feet.
27 feet? I believe we own 27 feet of one neighbor's property, and the other neighbor, where the, where they have, apparently having a garage built that doesn't comply either, was never built to permit, to our understanding, we actually, our, our property veers into the middle of their garage, so we've got a little bit of a messy, complicated situation here, but I, I just wanted to be known that in, in every appeal, we've, we've tried to make that honest effort of, of putting the facts out, and, and it's been, again, it's been kinda sidetracked with, with the topics, and then they, they closed the appeal, we never did get a chance to speak, you know, our, our position, or, or make a good faith effort to, to rectify this.
Anything else?
I think that's, that's it for the, for the most part.
And, and this is kind of a, it's not a rhetorical question, but are you on good terms with your neighbor?
You know, we haven't spoken with the neighbor since the incident, because the, the neighbor that apparently filed this complaint has never shown up to prove anything that he stated, so this was one of those things where he made a, a complaint or, or made statements, but in all the appeal process, and I'm not, not even sure today that he's here, there's never been anything to substantiate what he's claimed. All we know is, is we're not in compliant per the, per the building standards, and so this thing, like I said, has taken another direction. We've never had a chance to, you know, to, to, to say our part or to comply, other than the, you know, after the fact, after each appeal, we, we contacted Patrick Dobbs, asking what can we do to rectify this, to put this behind us, it's put a lot of mental stress on the family and, and everybody involved in this, and, and quite an expenditure of cost.
You, you, you might wanna get legal counsel to help you out with that.
So you were sent, I'm trying to understand the timeframe here, in December of 2016, code enforcement mailed a courtesy notice. There was no response, and then it took nearly 9 months for code enforcement finally came to visit the site and issued a verbal stop-work notice, and then on the 18th of, of August 2017, a notice of violation was mailed and returned unclaimed. So what is the problem with the
Sure.
The communication between you and code compliance?
Sure. As, as far as I know, there was no notices sent. Any notice that we've gotten personally, we've responded to, we've been in very close contact with Patrick and his department. Like I said, every, every notice that we've been aware of, we have complied 100%. I think Patrick can attest to that, that we've, we've tried to do everything per, I've come to him many times in closed-door meetings, asking for what can we do to comply? What is it, give us a roadmap, and, and we've gotten different directions every time. To give you an example, early on, we were told, or suggested by Patrick, he said, well, he said, I can't tell you for sure the outcome of this, but he said, maybe you should, you should bring a picture of the outlined houses and show how non-conforming they are, to, to at least argue that this appeal is, is warranted. We did that, we showed up for the appeal process, and it got, like I said, it got sidetracked, and the appeal was never heard, it was, it was denied. The second time, we talked with Patrick, he said, well, I can't promise you how they're gonna, the result of this, but I would, I would mention that the, that the septic is coming down Atwood, I would, I would use that as a, as a conversation. So every time we've gotten direction, not saying it was, it was concrete of what we should do, but there was suggestions of, of how we should approach each appeal, each time it being diverted to a completely different conversation and, and ousted out, so we, we never got a chance to, to comply any more than we have, you know, since, since we've been notified.
So why wouldn't you apply for a permit in the first place?
It's a long story, it's, it's, it's political driven between my family and the, and the person who started this, but at the end of the day, we're here now, I'm back with my wife, and, and we wanna comply, so that's all I can tell you.
So I still don't understand why you didn't apply for a permit in the first place?
There wasn't a, a permit to be had at the time, I, I had a relative involved in this, and started off doing construction, it started off as one thing, it grew into something else, and here we are. So again, since we've been notified of this, Patrick can, can confirm that, since we've been notified of this, we've done nothing but try to comply and spend the money, costs, and time to go through whatever motions been asked of us, from start to finish.
Supervisor Ure has a question.
Yes, so 3 separate violations that we're dealing with. One is the secondary dwelling unit above a garage, right?
Yes.
And your, your remedy for that is eliminate the, the And your remedy for that is eliminate the living space component of it, use it for something non-living, be it storage or some other, and move it out of the side setback?
If that's what's asked of us, yes. Like I said, what happened in the interim of this is we paid a survey company.
Understood, understood. So the, and then the same thing, I'm assuming with the other structure that was built, the covered patio structure, you believe that you can receive relief by virtue of the survey, which will show it is not within the setback, is that? Or even with the survey, will that end up being within? In other words, how do you plan to remedy that?
Biggest problem with that question is the neighbor's house, the neighbor's house itself ends up meet the setback.
Okay, let's-
There's no setback, the whole neighborhood is non-conforming as far as setback.
Let's not worry about the neighbor's house. My question for you is, is it your belief that the results of your new survey will either show you're not in the setback or will delineate a new line to which that would need to be moved? Or part of the elevated structure would have to be removed?
It gets us closer, it's not completely. The structure, the unpermitted structure in the back, the garage, with the setback, with the survey property line, will meet the setback. On the structure, on the patio, it goes at an angle, so it's still-
Okay, so you may be forced to remove part of the elevated structure or apply for a variance or something along those lines, okay. And then the third violation is the fence?
We are saying it's on side of the house, which doesn't require a height and they're saying it's the front, we have two fronts, which is ridiculous, we have a side and a front.
Okay, so you have, you sit at your corner lot, you sit on two roads?
Atwood, it's an easement and the front of the house is on the easement.
EJ, can you provide some clarifications to what we're dealing with on the fence part of it?
So Atwood Road is considered a front and that's where the fence is located? As so is the other roadway.
Atwood Lane.
Sorry, Atwood Lane.
So somewhere along the line-
Can you show me on an aerial or something so I get a little better orientation of what exactly it is we're talking about here? That one right there. So the fence is on-
The fence runs along Atwood Road, this is Atwood Lane.
Okay.
Serves other properties and so it's a double front with two sides.
Okay, and so is the eight-foot fence on Atwood Road that we're concerned about?
Yes.
Yes.
It's not the one on Atwood Lane that we're concerned about?
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
It's there for protection, soundproof, soundproof.
I understand, I get all that. And if you had a nice tall hedge there, nobody would care, frankly. But when you go and build a structure, that's when you have an issue. So my, personally, my preference would be, if in fact these can be remedied, to remedy them by either moving it or the survey or what have you. The single biggest concern I had was the septic system and the inability for any additional onsite disposal. And so I'm inclined to see if with a combination of whether it's a new survey or moving the structure, if we can actually remedy the problem and that front fence is a problem, then providing a remedy. It would, if the board were so inclined to allow for a time period to remedy the problem, would it be simply a matter of-
I'm prepared, Kirk, to continue this matter for a specific period of time.
Would it be an issue of-
They need to get somebody, a land use attorney onboard. Talk to Christina Rivera, she'll give you a list of folks that work in the county and we can come back at a later date and deal with this. But to those of you out there in TV land, this is how not to do a project.
Supervisor Montgomery, did you have?
Yeah, I'm certainly willing to continue this for a future conversation. I am going to say I'm astonished that you didn't think any of these things needed permits. You built a secondary dwelling, you installed a septic system, you built a fence and you built a substantial patio. I don't care what was going on with your family, permits are not negotiated with your family, they're negotiated with the county. So kind of astonished that you would even say you didn't think they required permits. I agree with Supervisor Yule. I think if we can get to some sorts of actual legitimate resolutions around here, that's what we all want to do. Have we seen a certified survey of this property? And if we get a certified survey, what does that mean to our conversation?
So thanks for asking that question. So we did receive a survey by the applicant originally and the survey shows, just like the site plan shows, that you're looking at today on the PowerPoint.
So it does not-
Subsequently, when we went to the planning commission after it was appealed by, you know, from the zoning administrator, another survey was in the works or in the process, I'm not sure if it was submitted at that time, Patrick?
I have a copy of it, it's basically the same survey, it just now included his stamp along with the disclaimer. So the first survey we got just said map exhibit, there was no stamp on it. I called the surveyor to ask, "Is this an accurate representation of the property and the improvements?" He said, "Yes," and subsequently, I think it was because of the applicant's pressure that, you know, hey, we paid you, we want your stamp on. And so we have a stamped survey.
Right, and what I'm asking is, does the survey show what these two gentlemen are alleging, which is there's twenty-seven extra feet that was not calculated into our analysis of the property?
I don't believe so, I could refer you to the survey that's provided in your packet, but they're talking about the western property line, these are on the, or, sorry, they're talking about the northern property line, which there's some question about, these are, these improvements are close to the east property line. So even if that property line was to move, it wouldn't change the setback.
And that's really what I was getting at, is where is this extra twenty-seven feet? It sounds like it is not on the property line that has the covered patio or the secondary dwelling unit, is that correct?
That's correct.
I understand it.
Okay. Gentlemen, you have a very hard and long road in front of you to traverse here to get something out of this board that is going to satisfy them, us and you. I would agree with Supervisor Yule that the fence, you gotta fix that, that's clearly a front. Front is not defined by where the entry to your home is, it's, there's other definitions around that. The secondary dwelling unit cannot be a dwelling unit when it comes back to me in any way, shape or form. I don't wanna see it in the setback. And the patio, same thing, I really don't wanna see it in the setback when it comes in front of us. So unless that twenty-seven feet that you referred to is on the side of the property line that has those improvements on it and unless you come back with fully engineered and approved plans for all those improvements that have been accepted and paid for in full, all our fees to the county, I'm gonna be saying no, but I'm certainly willing today to continue the conversation.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience wish to address the board on this item? Someone's coming forward? You got, someone's gonna come forward and speak. Good morning.
Good morning, my name is Maria Pinedo, I am the neighbor next door from 10401 Atwood Road. The last time my husband was here, today he's not in, he was arguing something about the privacy. I am the one who lives there in the property, my husband is not there, different issues. So I am the one who's living there and neighbors are like a family, neighbors is to help each other. With that big building next to our fence, I don't know the law, I don't know the codes, I don't, you are the ones, right? But personal for me, I don't care about that building, it doesn't bother me at all. For me, they can leave their building. The fence at the Atwood Road, maybe it's a little high, but it's, it doesn't bother me, but they have to follow the rules. The roof of the covered patio, I don't care of the roof of the covered patio, it's, it doesn't bother me, but they have to follow the rules. I'm here to let you know I don't have issues with those person. The big building, it doesn't do nothing to me, it's not in my bag anyway, it's still in their property. The septic tank issue, once in a while, think like a little smell, but it's not an issue, it's something, I mean, it's not a problem. So I'm here to let you know, for me, they can keep their building.
If I may, it sounds like there's an opportunity here for you folks to get together and talk. I would suggest that before this comes back as part of the-
We get that property a while ago and it wasn't rental, my husband have it rented to somebody else, so we didn't, we didn't come to look at it. Now I'm leaving there for a year and I feel sorry about all this situation is happening to them. You know, always family, when you see cancer situation hitting your family twice, you see the things different way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none. Jack, did you have any more comments?
No.
I just wanna say I don't see the wisdom in moving, continuing this, this is gonna be an uphill battle. It's gonna take quite a little while. And if it is the wisdom of the board to bring it, to continue it, then I'll go along with that. But again, I don't see the wisdom in it.
Well, Chairman Holmes, thank you for saying that. What, and I'm gonna ask county council this. Is there any conflict between us denying this appeal that's in front of us and then asking them to go forward with the things that they have suggested? The things they have suggested and the things that have come up today are separate from this appeal. So this board can actually take both actions today, as I understand it?
Yes, if the board wishes to deny the appeal, what would happen at that point is this matter would go back to code enforcement and the county would work with the property owner to resolve the issues. If the board wishes to continue the variance in the notion that one or more of the variance requests might survive the workout that would happen behind the scenes on the various code violations, then I'd recommend you continue, but I recommend you continue to a date certain because continuing off calendar, things tend to slip away and out of mind. So, but you certainly could deny it today and they would still have to work this out. It's really up to you which way you wanna go.
So I'm gonna put it to Supervisor Yule and Supervisor Duran. My inclination here today is to deny the appeal, give them the direction that they've heard today, which is go back and work this out. There is a path forward for you here, but it is not through this particular appeal. Do you have, I'll start with Supervisor Yule.
Yeah, I'll just speak to it. I, there are a couple of things that I, for instance, if we wanna take them, you know, one, two and three, the item three, I'm prepared to deny the appeal right now on, you gotta fix the fence. As far as items one and two are concerned, if we can show good faith in working with the neighbors, working with the county, they're trying to resolve a situation, you know, candidly, as far as I'm concerned, if the neighbors next door with the elevated patio structure, the neighbors don't really care whatever and they want a variance to setback on something like that, even though they should've come in and got permits, you know, so much of this county is already built in an environment where we're in setbacks and all the rest. And so does that really, you know, does it gain us anything as a county to say, "Well, by God, we're gonna stick on this?" I'm fine with for now, kind of holding this, the appeal that they have in process kind of over their head as an incentive for them to work nicely with the neighbors and hopefully, you know, come to some kind of resolution where they haven't lost what they've already spent to get to this point and we can walk away satisfied. But clearly, the issue of the living space, if you will, is off the table as far as I'm concerned and the fence is off the table. But as far as the location of the structure is adjacent to property lines and encroachment within the setbacks, I'm willing to continue the appeal on that and let it go forward. But I do agree that it should be to a date certain.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, if you wanna go ahead and uphold the appeal to the fence, I'm okay with that and then we just set it out sixty days and see where we are sixty days from now.
Karen, can we uphold a portion of-
I was just gonna suggest, the board also can take each one of these items and if there's one that you wanted to dispense with you today, you can certainly do that. The other thing I would point out though, in continuing the variance, staff will still be bringing back the planning commission's recommendation, of course, which is to deny. To approve that, there's gonna be that extra step of going through, if that's what the board decides on either of these items, to go through the CEQA review and we would have to have findings articulated to support that variance. I just wanna make sure you're all aware of that. But yes, you could dispense with one, two or three, one out of the three and continue the rest to a date certain.
So Karen, around that CEQA process, I was thinking if we continued this to a date certain, we would be looking at November twentieth, I think the twentieth, nineteenth, sorry, didn't have my glasses on. Is that sufficient time if we were to say no to number three and bring us back one and two today?
I'm going to look to EJ and Patrick to answer that question.
Man, I think setting a definitive date is gonna put both parties or all parties together to figure this out. So if we need to work within sixty days, we'll work within sixty days.
Okay, in that case, I would make a motion that we, let me find it here, deny the appeal on the third item, which is the fence, the as-built fence. We uphold the planning commission's decision as to the fence. As to the first two items, I would direct that those be resolved to the satisfaction of planning, the neighbor and the property owners and be brought back to this board on the nineteenth of November. And I'm just gonna reiterate that if they aren't resolved by the nineteenth of November, it will all get denied from my perspective.
And we will need a time certain for that as well.
And that's actually November twentieth, it's a Tuesday.
Oh, it's a Tuesday, sorry, I'm looking at Mondays, it was Tuesday.
Second, do we wanna assign a time?
Yeah, let's put it at nine twenty.
At nine twenty, okay.
Okay, does the clerk understand the motion?
The clerks are super smart, I'm sure they got it.
Okay, before I call for the vote, any other comments from the audience? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. The item is been approved or continued to a certain time certain. Thank you, you have your work cut out for you, friends. Thank you, staff.
Yes, you have your work cut out.
I am, but- Is the board, okay, do we need to take a five-minute break for anybody?
I'm fine.
I guess Kirk already did. So we've been asked to take it, what is it, item thirteen B, out of order? Thirteen B. That's the agricultural conservation easement? I guess some farmers have to get back to work.
Oh, what?
So we're gonna take, with concurrence with the board, we're gonna take item thirteen B, the agricultural conservation easements, three hundred and fourteen acres in North Auburn area, a funding agreement with the Placer Land Trust. Lori Morris, good morning, Lori.
Good morning, chair members of the board, Lori Morris, property manager for the Department of Public Works and Facilities. Today, we're here for your board's consideration of a funding agreement with the Placer Land Trust for the acquisition of three agricultural conservation easements, over three hundred and fourteen acres of property owned by the Oss Ranch family, Oss family. over 314 acres of property owned by the Oss Ranch family, Oss family. Your board, we're being asked, you're asking your board to adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works and Facilities or designate to finalize and execute the funding agreement to provide $496,200 in Placer Legacy Open Space Funds towards the Placer Land Trust acquisition of these three agricultural conservation easements. I'll call them ACES today, over 314 acres of land in North Auburn. This map before you is an exhibit that shows that this is the third such transaction with the Oss family back in 2015. That area in kind of yellowish-green was acquired by the Placer Land Trust with funding from your board. And that particular transaction was for 36 acres and the county contributed $32,000 towards that transaction. Land Trust had received $182,000 from the Wildlife Conservation Board for that. The second area is the area in green and that was 77 acres, point, 77.4 acres that was put in conservation in May of 2016. And that was due to the Placer Legacy funding of $80,000, matching the Wildlife Conservation Board funding again in the amount of $485,000. So today, we're here to consider, for your board to consider the support of the Land Trust acquisition of three separate conservation easements over those areas in red-orange kind of color. And that would total 314 acres. There's that northwest property up, up above Lone Star, which is 38 acres, 124 acres in the northeast property below Lone Star, and then the southern property of 152 acres. This property is within the Placer County Conservation Plan Reservation Acquisition Area. And it's also map provides, you see it in red there up to the top corner of the exhibit. And it's also in close proximity to Hidden Falls Regional Park, Harbor Gobert River Reserve, and other Placer Land Trust holdings, which are permanently protected with conservation easements or held in fee. The acquisition of these ACES meets Placer Legacy Open Space and Agricultural Conservation Program objectives. It'll protect in perpetuity the Oss properties' historic values, including current and future livestock grazing, oak woodland habitat, and scenic open space values. And it completes the Land Trust and the county's efforts to acquire this ace, ace over Oss entire 427-acre North Auburn area. The Placer County Conservation Plan designates this land as part of the reserve acquisition area for the purposes of conserving large interconnected system of agricultural, open space, and species habitat in the county. And the Placer Legacy portion of the acquisition could be counted to the 47,300-acre conservation goal under the PCCP program with a third-party beneficiary enforcement rights and the agency approvals. With your board's approval today, staff will work with county council on the finalization of a funding agreement with the Placer Land Trust. This funding agreement provides necessary leveraging of funds to the Department of Conservation Sustainable Agricultural Land Conservation Program grant funding in the amount of $1,402,500, which is also, which is required to close escrow. So prior to close of escrow, the county would deposit its funds, the 496,200, into escrow as contribution to the three conservation easements. In the funding agreement, Land Trust is required, will be required to acknowledge the county's contribution on the signage at the properties and other promotional materials or literature as appropriate. And the county will be permitted to accompany the Land Trust on monitoring visits to assess compliance of these easements. The conservation easements will also designate the county as third-party beneficiary as required for the, should we be able to apply the credits with the PCCP program, providing rights to enforce the terms of the conservation easements. I wish to note that, yes, last night, the Agri, Placer County Agricultural Commission met and was unanimously voted in support of the acquisition of these conservation easements and the support from your board towards the use of the Placer Legacy funding. So in conclusion, this contribution towards acquisition of the three conservation easements is in the best interest of the county, given it preserves additional open space property that meets both Placer Legacy and PCCP objectives. Daryl Oss, representing the Oss family, is here in attendance, as well as Jeff Darlington, the Executive Director for the Placer Land Trust. So they're available for questions if you have any. And I'm also welcome any questions your board may have. Thank you.
I see Supervisor Montgomery has a question.
Yeah, it's, it's actually not really a question, but it's just, I am so delighted to see this coming forward and I'm so delighted that Daryl brought this to us. Thank you. I recall when we were having, and Kirk and Jim will recall this, I'm not sure if Jack was on the board at the time, when we were having the conversation with the public here about adopting the map, there were a lot of people getting up and yelling at us about their properties were included in the map. And Daryl got up and said, "I'm here to yell because my property's not in the map and I want you to add it to the map." And we were like, "Oh, wow. Okay, great." And that, I think, was really sort of the genesis of today's conversation. And I am just so delighted that we were able to get to this point. I have no questions, no clarifications. I can just tell you I'm going to be supporting this action. I just, I am just, I'm, I'm over the moon. I'm so happy. So yay. Thank you.
Hey, we got it.
Sometimes you have to be happy.
This was a good time. Is there any other comments from board members? Seeing none. Anyone in the audience wish to address this on this item? Okay, well, now's the time, Supervisor. It's been moved and sectioned to approve the item of the Oss Ranch in the Agricultural Conservation Easements, 314 acres in North Auburn, the Oss Ranch, funding agreement with Placer Land Trust. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item is moved. Congratulations. Thank you. Wow. Let's see, where are we now? Nine A. That's the Placer County Housing Program Workup. Oh. Okay, yeah, all right. What is it? I'm good, okay. Now we'll move to our 9:45 timed item. The County Executive Community Development Resource Agency, Placer County 2018-19 Housing Program Work Plan. Jennifer Merchant.
Good morning, Chairman Holmes, members of the board, here to keep the happiness going. Talk about housing. Okay, and so this is an A/B item. I will be presenting the work plan and asking for action. And then Shawna Purvines will be talking about the housing strategy and development plan. So here is the action requested. To receive a presentation from me on the 18-19 Proposed Housing Program Work Plan and then approve that work plan and receive the presentation from Shawna. I do want to point out that we will, are not planning to discuss in detail today any proposed in-lu fee. We plan to bring forward a conversation to your board on the in-lu fee on October 9th, where staff will be presenting options for your consideration and then coming back to your board on October 23rd at your Tahoe meeting to talk about the East Placer County Fee Study. And then based on your board's direction, should you want to move forward with any ordinance, we would hope to bring that back by the end of the year. I do understand there are some folks who thought that in-lu fee was going to be discussed today and it's not. So I wanted to note that and bring that to everyone's attention. So let's move on with what is going to be discussed today. And just want to remind your board that you approved the first-ever housing work plan in August 2017. It really is something that helps us stay focused on housing and implementing the housing element, which goes through 2021. Got here a copy of the front page of the draft document. I have several copies in the back for anybody who wants to grab one and take, take it along. I do want to note that this is a draft that is in your packet and is out front and will be refined based on board direction and then ultimately posted on our website when it is in its final form. There are four components in the plan. Planning and research, incentives and regulation, funding and resources, and legislative advocacy, strategic relationships, and community engagement. That is something that we've changed since last year's plan. And I know it's a mouthful, but it was really intentional to remain consistent with the conversation your board had on strategic planning back in April. And you wanted us to focus on strategic relationships and community engagement in general in our day-to-day work with the county. And we felt it was really important to insert that into this work plan because that is a key component of getting our work accomplished. The budget for the work plan is $355,000 and we've estimated 4.73 FTEs to accomplish the work included. So some previous work plan highlights. We actually had completed over 30 tasks last fiscal year on the 17-18 Plan. We did bring together the housing unit, which is a multi-departmental group of county staff that are focused on implementing the work plan. Your CEDRA staff proposed and have now approved a second dwelling ordinance update that is consistent with state law. Economic development, completed two economic and housing profile reports, one for the south side of the county and one for the Tahoe portion of the county. And I believe they are working on right now a mid-county report. Your board approved an option agreement with Mercy Housing for development of housing on the Placer County Government Center site. We completed an inventory and map of publicly held land that could be used for housing. We are tracking and monitoring and, and created a tool that's available on our website for projects with affordable housing obligations so that your board is aware and the state is aware and our local residents are aware of our progress that we're making on affordable housing. And the, a big piece of the plan last year was the Housing Strategy and Development Plan that Shawna will be presenting today. And of course, acquisition of the Main Street property, which is pictured on the slide. So when I come to your board and speak in public, I always want to root us in why housing is in a critical situation in Placer County. And this slide I've used more than one time, so I apologize for reiterating it, but I do think it's important to state. With the median home price in Placer County hovering around $500,000, this means that a family of four falls short in its ability to purchase a home by more than $100,000. And in some corners of the county, specifically the eastern portion and others, where the median home price is in excess of $500,000, the challenge is even greater. So that's why we are really focusing on trying to facilitate development of affordable housing. So how are we hoping to do that this year? Under Component One, Planning and Research, we are proposing 11 tasks. $35,000 would be the cost and 1.36 FTEs estimated. I do want to note here that all of the red highlighted text indicates tasks that were recommended by the grand jury when they issued their report. So I'd want to make sure that your board and the citizens of the county are aware that we're paying attention to the grand jury reports and we're taking that feedback into consideration when we are working on our plans. So this first piece here is initiating our program and project-level environmental documentation. It's, it's really trying to help support projects that we know are being proposed, including the Government Center Housing Project that is on the county's property, supporting the Sunset Area Plan, Placer Ranch, Kings Beach Center, and the Nahas property. Secondly, analyzing internal and external institutional structures. We know that, you know, we put together the housing unit because we wanted to have some sort of form where we were bringing all of our experts in the county together to focus on housing. But, you know, it is a little bit of begging and borrowing and stealing our staff from other work efforts in many cases. While it's important to all of us, it's not our full-time focus. So we do think it's important to look at our internal structure and to make a determination whether this multi-departmental approach is the most efficient and effective approach or whether there might be others we could consider. And then also looking at our external institutional structures. Shawna Purvines and I went on a, a trip to Vail, Colorado with other folks from the Tahoe region. And we saw how their housing authority works very differently than the housing authority that, that we have here in Placer County, which is mostly focused on implementing our housing voucher program. And in Summit and Eagle Counties, they have a county-wide housing authority that their cities work very closely with in implementing housing projects and, and developing workforce and affordable housing. So we think there might be other models out there and we'll be analyzing that this year. And then we will be kicking off the 2021 Housing Element, which is required by the state of California. We've got a draft now of the Tiny House on Wheels Ordinance and we'll be analyzing, timing on bringing that forward hopefully soon here. And then of course, ongoing tracking of obligations, deed restrictions, arena targets, et cetera. And we have a draft of performance measures that we will present, be presenting to your board at some point here soon on how we plan to implement the strategic plan goal of developing achievable housing throughout the county. So we'll be measuring our performance in that area as well as in this work plan. So Component Number Two, Incentives and Regulation, seven tasks, $35,000, just under one FTE. A big chunk of this is contracting to prepare the environmental review of the proposed revisions to policies and ordinances, including analyzing a fee waiver and deferral. Process improvements that streamline housing development. This is something that was identified in the grand jury report. And updating and making very clear what our design standards are so that developers know upfront and it doesn't go kind of back and forth as they go through the permit review process. Also analyzing options to address housing for missing middle households up to 195% of AMI. This is a recommendation of the Mountain Housing Council. May or may not focus directly on eastern Placer County and we'll be looking at whether this is a standard we may consider applying countywide, although the percentages may be different. I will say that TRPA will be reporting to your board when you are in Tahoe about some changes that they're making to their development rights system that allows for bonus units for affordable housing to go up to a higher percentage and not be limited only for 80% and lower because we know we've got problems in the higher income ranges as well. Then finally, working with eastern Placer County stakeholders to assess options for a second homeowner rental program. I've had various meetings with private sector stakeholders as well as the community foundation on this. And we hope to move something forward before the end of the calendar year. Then on Component Three, finalizing the in-lu fee recommendation. And I did already mention we are planning to go back to your board on that on October 29th and 23rd and potentially come back with an ordinance for your board's consideration before the end of the year. The second item here, develop an affordable housing financing and investment strategy. I don't want to get ahead of myself on the legislative side, but we do think that there are a lot of opportunities to work with the state legislature, specifically in this coming year, on new funding opportunities as well as really making sure that we get our fair share of money back that we're putting into state systems from the, from Placer County. I think I presented to your board in July that in the first six months of the transfer tax, we had collected $2.5 million in funds in the first six years, excuse me, first six months in unincorporated Placer County. So imagine if we had $5 million a year to allocate of our local resources to housing, what we could do. As it stands now, that money is going back to the state and we're probably going to see a limited amount of that back. So we'll be working to, to analyze how we can best secure our own resources and keep them. inside of our county. Also be looking to continue our first-time homebuyer program, applying for grant funding for things like the no place like home grants for the Government Center campus, and looking to house additional homeless folks and people with disabilities. So seeking and generating revenue. And finally, on Component Four, under legislative advocacy, strategic relationships, et cetera. Updating the county's legislative platform to include housing with up-to-dated information, to-date information. Continue to improve our website and develop marketing materials so that we can outreach about the things we are doing. One of the things we talked about is on the bottom line, they're preparing and distributing a guidebook on building and ADU so that people know how they can go about doing that because the rules have changed since the state changed their laws. And then continuing to map available multifamily development sites, not only publicly held but also privately held. I will move on to the final slide. And the staff recommendation is to approve the 1819 Housing Work Plan or provide any feedback to us on changes you'd like to see. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from board members? Supervisor Montgomery.
I know, what a surprise. Just wanted to, one, say thank you for all the work you've done on this, both in eastern Placer County but here in the west part of the county as well. There's a couple of just suggestions that I would make around this, particularly as relates to Slide Number Seven, Component Two. The red highlighted process improvements that streamline housing development. I think we need to make it very clear that what we're talking about here is streamlining affordable or achievable housing, not all housing development, because I think frankly 16,000 square foot lakefront properties probably aren't going to need these kinds of assistance that more affordable housing is going to. And then on Component Three, finalizing the in-lu fee recommendation and bringing forward. I'm delighted that that's finally going to be coming forward. I have some of my own opinions around that that I will certainly share at the appropriate time, but critically important that we have this discussion and we get to some sort of resolution so that both the development community and the rest of us in the community can have some sort of understanding about what are the rules and regulations and what can they rely upon. That's it.
Any other comments from board members? I just want to say I couldn't agree more with Supervisor Montgomery's statement and observation. Now is the time for anyone in the public that wishes to address this. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning. Will Taylor, Placer Independent Resource Services. I want to thank the planning department for all your hard work. It's a great presentation, and it looks like you're doing some amazing things. A little frustrated how long it's taken for in-lu fees to be brought before the board. I believe we were promised in April that this ordinance or the recommendation would be brought forward in May, and it's been postponed all year. So I hope October 9th is the firm date for that. One hopes. Definitely, as an agency that supports people with disabilities, we encourage the use of, you know, the ending of in-lu fees entirely. But if absolutely necessary and a last resort, it might be acceptable.
Okay.
No, I mean, it's, the ways in which in-lu fees have been applied have been, has been so inconsistent that it really hasn't been fair across the board for any developer or indeed for the community because nothing could ever be built with the fees that were collected. So we really encourage, we're actually, we're really encouraged by the work that you're doing, and would like to see more affordable, accessible, achievable housing. Thank you.
Thanks, Will. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Carol Carter. I'm here on behalf of Placer People of Faith Together. We too expected there to be a time to comment about in-lu, and we're eager for that conversation to happen. I just want to say that our community of faith people throughout the county support, care for all the people in the county, and this plan is wonderful in that aspect, that it's very universal considering all the different kinds of need of housing and all the possibilities that we could create here so that every person has a home. That's the HERC's motto or vision for the world, for our part of the world, a home for everyone. So we as Placer People of Faith support that wholeheartedly, and any kind of change in ordinance or zoning that is needed to make this happen, we support that because we believe everyone deserves to have that kind of stability. Families cannot function without homes, without an appropriate, people who have mental health issues cannot really function or get better or give their gifts to the community without that basic need met. So kudos to all of you who are working on that. Thanks to this Board of Supervisors being open to see that need in our community. We appreciate it very much, and we'll keep coming until the meetings are finished and the housing's built. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Wayne.
Good morning, Chairman Holmes, board members Todd and Karen. Wayne Nader, and I appreciate what Jennifer and Shawna are doing. We're finally making some progress. This has been long overdue. I'm going to be quite candid with you. The county in addressing affordable housing has been dismal, and we need to kick this into gear. I would agree with one of your previous speakers that this has been, we're putting this off too long. We really need to get some real teeth into this so we can actually get something done. I'm not going to be available on the 9th, if I understand. That's when you're coming back to talk about the in-lu. So I will tell you that in general, I hate in-lu fees. I mean, just not specifically just to this, but anywhere because they do not adequately address the mitigation measures of what they're actually supposed to be doing. In most cases, it doesn't even come close. So we really need to bring that level up to where it is more accountable, and I think in most cases, we should be not providing the in-lu, we should be actually providing construction. Because once the county takes possession of those funds, then they are, if, as those funds go out, they have to meet all kinds of different kinds of requirements that usually add cost to that. So the actual, as you apply those dollars out there, they can't do as much as the private sector can. So I think we really need to partner as a county with the construction industry, the building industry, to come up with building, actually building, having them building these products. It's been done in Roseville, it can be done in the county. And so I'm hoping on the 9th that you will, again, really do something here. And again, it's, we're way behind the curve on this. We should have been addressing this years ago. As you all know, the cost of housing has absolutely gone through the roof in California, but in Placer County, we've seen it just skyrocket, the cost of construction now. So actually accomplishing this is going to be more challenging now, but we have to put a dent in this because we are just, we're pushing a whole lot of people out of the county because they can't afford to live here. So please, on the 9th, take this, take this to the level where it needs to be. Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, board members and others. My name is AJ Rodriguez. I was here several months ago giving a speech about my personal story of recovery from mental illness and substance use. Today, I want to speak as an advocate, not only as a person who has experienced mental illness and homelessness, but also as a peer that works regularly with others who experience mental illness and homelessness. It can often be very difficult to navigate resources to find recovery when you're homeless. When I was homeless, I was just too mentally ill to deal with getting help because it took everything I had just to make it through living on the streets. Having consistent housing allows people with these extra barriers to have a chance at stability and really work on recovery. It's really hard to care about recovery when you don't even know where you're going to sleep for the night. Many of the clients I work with that are homeless have a difficult time engaging with services and are struggling to find recovery. Please remember to prioritize the needs of people living with mental illness into your plan as housing is key to a person's recovery. Thank you.
Good morning. Mike Garabedian, Placer Groups here. Three points that we just want to talk about this morning. The two quickly that have already been addressed, we oppose in-lu fees and hope that there will be recommendations, very substantially dealing with that. We're looking forward to that. But I mentioned that a previous item on the agenda this morning, the question of when prior, old projects come in for extensions of time. We would recommend that there be some recommendations or policy suggestions, at least recognition of the problem. We hope you would, can make some advances there. Like I said before, I thought it looks like there have been some changes of that, that nature. Now, at the first large workshop of et cetera, I asked the question, how many people are leaving the county because of this? And apparently, no one knew. At the next session at a MAC, I asked the same question. I was told, "It's on my desk," quote-unquote. I hope we can find out, if not today, that that is something that's part of the research that we will learn about how many, I think we all know people who have left the county, including people active in civic affairs, and we need to know what, exactly what's happening, that score.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Janice.
Good morning, sir. Chairman Holmes and honorable members of the board. I'm happy to speak to you today. I'm actually not so disappointed that it was postponed to October 9th because then we get to talk to you again.
[laughing]
And I'll cut out half of this, what I was going to say today, which is good because when I timed it, it was over three minutes. So I am the Executive Director for First Five Placer, the Children and Families Commission, and I'm a Colfax resident of unincorporated Placer County. As you know, First Five Placer is committed to supporting the healthy development of our youngest children to make sure they are on track to succeed in school and life. We've focused on access to quality early learning, supporting thriving families, preventing child abuse, and promoting access to healthcare, including dental and behavioral health. To advance these issues and other issues that are important to children and families, First Five partners with many agencies, and we join voices today with many partners to advocate for affordable housing, a fundamental concern for families with small children in Placer County. We applaud the board for its deliberate and thoughtful studies and consideration of housing matters. This plan is really extraordinary. It's thoughtful, it's thorough, it's a great plan. The creation of a housing unit in the CEO's office and a housing and economic development unit at SEDRA were positive moves, demonstrating the board's serious consideration of housing matters. We support approval of this housing program work plan. The housing element raises two key provisions which are particularly relevant to families. First, to grow affordable mixed-use housing types for existing and future residents, students, and employees whose income cannot support the cost of housing. You mentioned this and demonstrated it in the presentation earlier. And to improve our growth by existing employers in reducing critical labor shortages of skilled workers who just don't have housing available to them. These are issues now as we know, and as we grow older, right, and our senior ratio rises, to plan for future housing stock is really critical. It's really important. Toward that, we ask 10% of housing stock be affordable, prioritizing construction of units, not fees in lieu of development. We look to Roseville for a healthy model with respect to that, as they have built 3,000 units without fee in lieu, and we have built none. Secondly, we support solutions that incentivize developers and make building multifamily units and other affordable alternatives financially feasible and support a streamlined process to reduce building times. I urge the board to consider seriously the best practices outlined in BAE's memo on pages six and eight, which is 94 through 96 in your packets, and I thank you very much for your time.
Good morning, Sue.
Good morning. I'd like to apologize for that outburst back there on my phone.
Oh, that's all right. It woke me up.
Good. I'm Sue Thompson. I'm with the Placer Community Foundation and also Realtor, Hometown Realtors. And all I want to say is that what you focus on improves, and I just want to thank you for your focus.
Thank you. Well, that was nice. Anyone else? Oh, there we go. Good morning.
Good morning. Janet Thew here. I represent no one, just a plain old citizen. I have read the grand jury report, I've read your response. I'm wading through the ginormous housing plan, kind of slogging through it. One thing I did notice, there was a chart showing what the fees could be if you add an in-lu, and I saw that it went up to $90,000 per unit for more expensive homes in one chart. And I thought, boy, this ain't going to work. That's certainly not a good plan. I also read Veronica Blake's op-ed in the B, which I believe came out today.
Yeah.
And I urge you to read it if you haven't.
You did.
I agree with her wholeheartedly. I think in-lu has often been used as window dressing to meet Rena numbers, and we need to build, not write checks. Thank you.
Thanks, Janet. Anyone else wish to address on this item? I see no one in the Tahoe City Office, so I'll close the public comment and bring them back to the board first. Oh, we need to...
Yeah, I moved that we approved the fiscal year 2018-19 annual housing program work plan.
Moved in section to approve the item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstention? The ideas move. We'll now move to 9B, Update on Placer County Housing Strategy and Development Plan. Shawna Purvines.
Good morning. For a few minutes. Shawna Purvines with the Community Development Resources Agency, and I'm just going to update you on some work from last year's work plan that really dealt with the county's regulations, policies, and ordinances around housing. So the Housing Strategy and Development Plan is a subcomponent of the annual work program, and as I said, it does address those policies and processes associated with the shortage of available housing. It's probably no surprise, under supply of housing does have impacts, it's kind of basic supply and demand, that if you don't have enough housing, we will see sale prices and rental rates go up. But we're also now starting to really experience our businesses not being able to house their workers, and so that will have a more of an economic impact as well. So the plan, what we did is we did go contract with BAE, that was the mention, and they assisted us pulling together some information that I'm going to kind of run through real quickly. But the plan approached this problem specifically by looking at ways to create more incentives to build affordable and workforce housing, changing or looking for ways we could revise our regulations that makes building housing easier, advocating for more state and federal assistance, Jennifer covered that, and then furthering partnering with, for meeting our regional housing needs. And we've actually had some luck, and great opportunities partnering with Sutter and to help with supportive housing, and we're hoping to further that and expand on that as we go forward. So I'm going to kind of get now more into the nitty-gritty. So the plan components, the Housing Strategy and Development Plan components, was first just to assess what our needs were and what, it's both kind of a catch-up and keep-up. So where are we at today? What do we need? And then what do we need in the future? To look at other jurisdictions where they're having success in achieving their goals and then create a package of recommendations that we can consider for amending our policies and ordinances. And then also, as we identify some really key sites throughout the county, and this is what the plan did, it identified about 100 parcels throughout the county where it is suitable to develop affordable housing. And then created an evaluation tool based on the types of fundings that are out there so that we can be most competitive. So depending on where the site is, its location, its amenities, then be able to focus those into the funding streams where we might have the most chance of getting funded for those. And then last and not least, and what keeps us very busy, is just trying to keep up with the state. This year is no comparison to last year. Last year, they were very busy. This year, it was a little bit quieter, but we do anticipate next year with the new administration, it will probably pick back up again. So regardless of who... So, regardless of who occupies the governor's office, both seem to have a healthy housing program objective, so. So, just quickly, kind of more of on a macro level, what we learned this last year, if we continue building out at the rate we have been building at, between 2017 and 2040, we're going to build about 5,336 units. Looking at what our population growth and our employment needs are, the goal we should be trying to reach is 13,480. Again, this is a snapshot in time, a lot of things can change, but just at this point, that's what it's looking like by 2040. So, that puts it at a shortfall of about 8,144 units. And we broke it down a little bit further, and we broke it down by different areas of the county to look at those income levels and see what type of housing we need, and that's a lot of talk about the affordable housing, workforce housing, achievable housing. Each one of those kind of relates to a different income level. The one thing that came up that was probably most concerning was in eastern Placer County, in most areas, both in the county and the state, we are seeing income levels rise, but of course, we're seeing housing prices rise even higher, but we actually saw in eastern Placer County, income levels decreasing while those housing prices. So, that gap is getting wider in that area, which just makes that challenge a little more on the eastern side of the county. We also took a look at what is the housing capacity. So, if we kind of stripped away a lot of our density limiting requirements, whether it's setbacks or height limits, or lot coverage, or just site restrictions, and looked at just the basic general plan and zoning allowances, we were able to determine what the full housing capacity is in the county. The first three lines, I'm hoping this works. It does. So, the first three lines here, these are entitlement lots and are, you know, paper lots, if they've made it through to the final map, or to the tentative map and final map stage. The one that we spent most of our time focusing on are the vacant site inventory, which are the existing parcels we have today, ones that we could actually work with today and not need to wait for additional discretionary action by the developer. So, you can see there's about 10,000, single-family lots, about 13,000 available units, based on the multifamily sites that we have. There's an estimate, we could build, you know, if the homeowner wishes, an additional about 6,000 lots in secondary. The 1,800 here and the other unknown, we do know they're residential, we just didn't know if they were single-family or multifamily, because the documents weren't real clear on what type of unit was allowed there, and so we have a little more digging, but we didn't want to lose those densities, so we included it in here. So, in total, you know, right now, again, if we kind of, like as I mentioned, kind of stripped away some of those rules and regulations, you know, we're looking at kind of a maximum capacity of 31, which is a healthy capacity. But as we know, and I can explain, I can give an example here with the multifamily, when we layered back on some of those density limiting requirements, that number dropped down to about 3,000 units. So, we have some substantial constraints on a lot of our parcels, and that's where we're really focusing a lot of our effort. We also looked at development costs, both on eastern and western side, and really broke it down. The red is fees, the gray is the cost of labor and materials, the yellow is cost of land, and the light blue is the soft cost for financing. And county pretty much, you know, really controls the red, the fee side of it, but we didn't stop there. We are looking at where we might be able to reduce the cost of labor and materials by looking at alternative structures or housing types, where we can get those projects in quicker, such as modular-type housing. We're actually even talking to people about container housing and seeing some of that get built. And then, as far as the yellow goes, with county properties, where we control the property in hopes that we might be able to reduce the cost of that land. And then in soft costs, it's part of the state financing and state programs where we might be able to reduce those costs. So, by breaking it down a little bit, we're able to target now where we might be able to provide relief for the development of housing.
Shawna, before you move off that slide, the red bar that shows fees, are those everybody's fees, or are those just county fees? Because 5% and 4%, that is certainly not the perception out there in the community. There is a perception that fees are like this massive amount.
Those are county fees and does not include specific plan fees.
So, it doesn't include specific plan, does it include fire district fees, airport fees, school fees?
It does. The 5% and 4% is because the cost of the housing is so high on the eastern side. You'll see it's much higher on the western side.
Yeah, no, I do see that, but...
Yeah, it does include any special district fees that we were able to pull. So, school district fees, fire fees.
Supervisor, you got a question?
Yeah, today, the total fee, just the fee burden is, depending on jurisdiction, and school districts are where it really varies the most, between $50,000 and $60,000 a front door is the total fee burden. So, when that's your fee burden, you can see, out the gate, before you've begun construction or grading or anything, you can see where that issue of providing affordable housing...
Is difficult.
Yeah, understood. I think, though, it's important to also understand what that percentage is of the actual construction costs.
Well, I think more importantly, when you look at the sales price, when you look at that first matrix that we saw that showed what a house has to sell for to be in the very first, or to be in the affordable ranges, and we're looking at, you know, $350,000, well, $50,000 is one-seventh of the cost, it's just government fees. And that's, you know, and that's, it'll be a fun conversation that we'll have, I think, at some point. When you're looking at publicly traded companies like Lennar, we can see what both top and bottom line is, and you actually see that total take by government is actually more than the take by the builder.
Any other comments? Please proceed.
So, now that we had some of those fundamentals, (laugh) that we know what we need, what we have, what it costs, we had a lot of questions, and this is really where we kicked off our public outreach efforts. Some of the questions we had was, you know, what is the need? Is it more or less for sale or rental-type housing that we're seeking to get to? What are some of those missing housing types people are seeking? Where are the opportunities for housing development? What are the barriers and perceived barriers? What are some solutions or tools that would help us facilitate that? So, beginning last March, we started kicking off a public outreach effort. Before we got started, though, I got to mention Tahoe Truckee and their housing assessment, they got about a year jump on us on that, which was great. We were able to really glean a lot of information from them and understand what some of the needs were up in that area. But as I mentioned, the housing forum was in March. We did that as a joint forum with a community foundation. There was roughly about 75 people in attendance. And following that, and we went out and did a round with the municipal advisory committees, just to let them know kind of what we're hearing, what we know, a lot of the data that I just provided you, and was able to get feedback from them on some of the key issues they needed, both in more of our urban areas and our rural areas. And then we kicked into some stakeholder interviews, and we did focus groups with housing project applicants, people that are actually bringing applications through the county, to find out where they felt their hurdles were, and what the costs and what the constraints might be. Talked to focus groups, housing advocates and stakeholders, including some of our supportive housing and special needs housing. And then we established a housing newsletter to help get the word out that we're here, we're wanting to talk and listen. To date, or as of August, when this was being prepared, there was over 6,600 subscribers just to the housing newsletter alone, which I was pleasantly surprised to see that level of interest, but I don't think there's a surprise that there's that level of interest. And then, more recently, this summer, we did two flash votes, and this is a program that the county does have. We kept them very short, five questions each, and they were very specific to housing costs, design, and choices. Between the two of them, we had 5,549 respondents. 3,354 of those were local, meaning they were in Placer County. A total of 1,653 unfiltered responses. That meant they just got to tell us what they thought. There was a lot of ideas in there. There was a lot of opinions about ideas in there, but it's a good, it's a healthy debate that needs to happen. It's been 30, 40 years of policies and rules and fees that have kind of gotten us to the situation, and kind of peeling back and trying to figure out where we're going to be most successful is going to take that conversation to make sure that we create good policies going forward. But general interest, and I'm definitely generalizing, when you have 5,549 respondents and 1,600-plus unfiltered responses, overall, what we kind of heard from these is an interest in smaller homes and streamlining of that permit process, and so that's what we're focusing on. So, if you haven't had a chance, these are on the housing website. You can go in and take a look, read 1,600 responses if you want to, it's great. I did pull out just one, Keep It Classy Placer, it just made me giggle a little bit, but it was also a really good reminder that, you know, whatever we're doing, we do need to be respectful of our communities and our cultures, and ensure that we're keeping in that spirit as we're looking at our policies and our, and any changes. So, some of the housing choices that we are considering, for the most part, we are focused on more urbanized infill-type development, multifamily, commercial-zoned land, where we allow those higher-density housing, so things like mixed use, multifamily, duplexes, condos, and small-lot subdivisions. We have had some fun and had great feedback from our MAC on a cluster-type housing called AgriHoods. It's probably the only one that we're actually looking at that really addresses more of a rural need. This allows for kind of protecting some of the property rights to subdivide while also providing the opportunity to preserve and protect some of our more important agricultural lands. So, working with Josh, our ad commissioner, on what that might look like. We have some really good examples, even in the state of California, and models that we might be able to model that after. So, that's been, that's been a fun one. So, the strategies are broken down into these five categories. We're looking at plans and policies, regulatory relief, streamlining, preserving and protecting what we already have, where we have buildings or houses or units that we can get back into, repurpose, or do some type of an adaptive reuse plan. That's important. And then again, local funding and strategies is critical as we go forward. So, just quick, some examples, those village strategies, considering some minimum density opportunities, regulatory relief, trying to get to more by right review development. That means the heavier lift, the planning is up front to approve those code changes and SEQA reviews, so that on the back end, the actual applicant or the developer can have a quicker by right review of their project. Streamlining, you know, the administrative process, but also where we can take advantage of SEQA streamlining that's already built into the code, that's something that we're going to want to look at, I mean, state code. Preservation and protecting, as I said, those existing structures, and then looking for that local funding strategy, which is part of our work plan coming up this year, and where we can maximize those revenues that will actually create and/or support the development of housing. So, you heard from Dan Dotay today announcing one of our more recent technology updates, but again, we're just trying to get people in and through the process quicker and make it less intimidating. So, we actually have a whole host of technology upgrades that CEDRA is working on. We'll bring you back a much more detailed presentation on each of these different items. But ultimately, what we're trying to get to is a virtual public counter, 24/7. People can get help, get permits, apply online with the county. And we're trying to do it all, even voice-activated, so that you can do it even remotely if, as needed, so. So, here's what's next. The SEQA analysis on the code update, we're currently, as we know the recommendations are in, we're taking a look at where we can amend those codes, preparing those draft changes now, and then working towards that SEQA analysis that'll be necessary for your adoption. As we know, SEQA takes a little bit of time, so this will probably be working its way through over about the next year or so to bring it back to you for any type of final decision. The financial plan is a large part of our work program this coming year. Looking at these opportunity sites and areas, we know we have about 100 parcels. We now need to figure out what's the best use and which ones we need to prioritize. We are talking about updating the residential fee and fee waiver or deferral update. We do have a county ordinance. It was done under the redevelopment agency, so it does need a little bit of updating, but I think with the interest of fees and the costs that those are bringing to a project, it would be a good opportunity to look at that ordinance and see if we can't revise it. Process improvement, I've already spoke on, we're continuing to implement those as we can, as soon as we can. A public awareness and promotion plan for housing, this was out of those 1,600 comments we got back. I saw over and over and over again how the county should allow secondary dwelling by right, and I kept thinking, county's been doing that for about two years now. So, clearly, the message isn't getting out. So, you know, one of the things is some type of a campaign that kind of helps with, did you know, you know, that what you can do now before a lot of the other stuff even kicks in? And then, again, this year, 2019, we will, or not this year, coming, this fiscal year, we will be kicking off the 2021 Housing Element Update, working with SAICOG on that. So, the housing webpage, this is where everything is at. At this point, we aren't planning another flash vote, but stay tuned. If you do want to participate on any of our next flash votes, I encourage you to sign up. All of this information, the BAE study report, the in lieu fee, and any items that we think are of interest to those that are wanting to know more about housing and what's going on with the county, we do put onto this one page, so encourage people to go there.
Very good. Supervisor, you got a question? No. Now, you're supposed to push, this is where you push the...
Turned it off, sorry.[1608.14][1608.14](Laughter). Sorry about that.
Go ahead.
And you specifically addressed where we can take advantage of existing opportunities within SEQA. But we are assuming that we continue to operate within the existing regulatory framework of SEQA with no substantial SEQA reform, especially on the tort side. Is that the assumption? Do we look at where we can work with other jurisdictions who are trying to take an honest look at how to solve our affordable housing problem? And rather than looking to the state as we've described and trying to figure out where we can go to the state or the feds for additional assistance, and I'm assuming we mean financial assistance and delivering product to the marketplace, what about assistance from the state or feds in identifying what are the impediments that artificially restrict the market or drive the market cost for delivering a product up, and simply seek that kind of regulatory relief? I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't cost the state anything to free jurisdictions up from burdens that artificially increase the cost of providing a good or a service. And so, where we have these kinds of things, particularly in rural counties or suburban counties, where we require prevailing wage on projects that needn't be prevailing wage and automatically increase the cost by 30% for delivering a mile of road, these kinds of things, why are we not looking at what are the true impediments to deliver housing at an affordable price? You know, when you look at the spectrum across the nation, I used the Lennar example previously, we look at what Lennar can deliver, a built home in California versus a built home in hurricane-prone Gulf states. Why can they deliver a home in hurricane-prone Gulf states where your building standards are that much higher, both from an energy efficiency and a structural standpoint, and yet deliver the product so much cheaper in those states as opposed to in California? So, while we engage in this, as was described previously, the legislative advocacy, strategic relationships, and community engagement, I would, and then, of course, in this plan as well, I would hope that at some point, we're having an honest conversation with our state representatives about, you know, if you guys want to get serious about helping address the cost of affordable housing in the state, maybe you ought to look at where you're adding cost to deliver product in the state.
Agree.
Okay.
And... And I, you know, on behalf of the county, I sit on both an HCD and a CSAC legislation. I know we're working with our legislative analyst office, you know, to help drive some of these particular points home, everything from the little stuff to the bigger stuff, like prevailing wage. Yeah, absolutely. We have to continue to keep pressure on in hopes that we at least don't, it doesn't make it worse. You know, we're not going, but where we can kind of reverse that. We are starting to see pokes at sequa reform. We have had some things that pass. I, just talking with someone a few days ago, I think there's been nine different revisions to the infill policies at the state level for sequa reform and streamlining. I can't find a one that really fits a suburban or rural county at this point, so I would like to see, you know, that happen where we actually have some of those benefits. And so I'm continuing to talk that up, but I know, working with our legislative office, we are, we are trying to talk up towards the state as well.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Just a quick comment, both in regards to Jennifer's presentation and to yours. I think one of the most effective things we can do around this whole issue is identify one person who is the lead person who is really focusing on nothing but this issue. Both you and Jennifer have a whole array of things on your plate, and while you guys have done fantastic work around this, we need someone who does nothing but this 100% of their time and has the appropriate support staff to move these things forward and do the research and all the other things that are going to be associated with this. So I would just strongly encourage our board to really think about, if we're going to be committed to this, how do we, how do we actually implement it? Not just how do we fund it, you know, but how do we actually implement it? So my thoughts.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anyone in the audience wish to address the board on this issue? Here she comes. Good afternoon, Catherine.
Good afternoon already. Catherine Ferry, I'm with Norco, Mental Health America. I advocate on behalf of mental health clients. AJ has already spoken eloquently on mental illness and its relationship to housing. AJ advocates like this and educates people on mental illness and housing. As part of our Mental Health Speakers Bureau, we come here regularly, and just wanted to know that we're going to be focusing on this issue more and having people with experience like AJ's to come and give comment on these meanings, because I think their perspective is very important to this issue, and it really needs to be vital and incorporated throughout. I wanted to also say, kind of separately but related, that I really appreciate the stakeholder process that I know has taken place with the surveys and reaching out to the community. What I'd like to see more of is more explicit emphasis on cultural and linguistic competency in these kinds of plans, which is standard. I've done a lot of statewide work, especially in mental health. And, you know, having a designated cultural competency component to a plan is a good thing to see, showing specific outreach and goals for people of diverse linguistic and cultural needs in the community. I recently attended a forum on education in Placer County, which highlighted the diverse cultural and linguistic needs of our K-12 students and their families. And I think we need to invite those leaders to the table, people who represent diverse racial, ethnic, age, gender, all of these groups, who have leaders that can speak on these issues as they relate to housing. We have a number of local agencies that focus on reaching individuals from diverse backgrounds who I'm sure would be very grateful to be invited to the table for housing. So I would encourage involving those agencies and individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Welch.
Good afternoon. Larry Welch, Placer Community Foundation. First, I'd like to thank the board and the staff for your leadership and for everything that's been done over the past couple of years, especially over the last year, to get us where we are today. We applaud the work that's been done to incorporate affordable housing into the Witten Master Plan. That's awesome. We appreciate the additional staff and the resources that are focused on the problem. I would agree that dedicated resources would be fabulous and an improvement. And we're excited about the new tools and the strategies that are being developed to make it easier to build housing in our county. We sincerely hope these efforts and the upcoming decision regarding fees and lieu will result in affordable housing units being constructed in the very near future. Despite all the good work we've seen this morning, the housing crisis in our state and our county continues to grow. As you well know, at the state level, the crisis is so acute that it looks like a statewide rent control ballot initiative is going to pass in November, something none of us want to see. And in here, Placer County, over 40%, some argue the near 50% of our families are paying over 30% of their gross income, their gross income to housing. So to paraphrase the grand jury report, our current approach to providing affordable housing in the county is not working. The updates to the housing work plan and the housing strategy and the development plan are really a great start. It got us going. We've got a lot more momentum than we had, and we're heading in the right direction. But we need to do much more, and we need to do it quickly. We need to keep working to make constructing affordable housing as simple as possible, and we need to stop relying on fees and loos to get housing built. Accepting fees and lieu doesn't get housing built in Placer County. Collecting fees has resulted in creating a meager $1 million housing trust fund, but it hasn't resulted in construction. We strongly believe that the simplest way to get affordable housing built is to require the experts to do the work. That's the developers. They're the ones that know how to build. We should, we should lean on them to do the building and not pay fees. It's just the simplest way to get housing built. So with this in mind, we ask that you think of three things over the next month, and we'll be back. We'll remind you again. One is that fee and loos only be used as a last resort, and that we look to construct affordable units as our number-one priority. Two, in those rare cases where fee and lieu really needs to be used, and there are those rare cases, that the fee be considerably higher than it is today. Let's make it meaningful. And three, that we, that the existing fee and lieu trust fund dollars be applied to creating affordable housing as soon as we possibly can. So in closing, I want to thank you again for focusing on housing. As Sue Thompson says, what you focus on gets done. Things are happening. It's really encouraging to see the work that's out there. And I know a county is not a city. We have different challenges, different problems, but if those guys can figure it out, and I won't even mention who those guys are, we can figure it out here at the county. So thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thanks, Terry.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, sir.
I'm between you and lunch. This is not a good place to be. My name's Ken Larson. I'm a 34-year resident of the county and on the board of the Placer Community Foundation, supervisor homes, supervisors, staff. It's very encouraging to see how far we've come over the last couple of years in our understanding of the affordable housing situation in Placer County and how we can work to address the need. The conversation's really changed based on that we're seeing a lot of data, hard data. We know I have a number of options that can be used as part of the strategy and tactics to increase the workforce housing. And know that there is not one option alone. There's no silver bullet here. Otherwise, we would have figured that out a long time ago. It's going to take a multi-task area or approach to it. Today's presentation highlighted a number of those options. The community development department, the planning commission, the board of supervisors, the development community, and the public continue looking at and exploring options that might work in Placer County. We know that other entities have figured out how to make progress and feel we can too. We need to use our creativity and collaborate to find solutions that work for Placer County. We can't cut and paste from others necessarily, although it's tempting, but our situation is different. We can leverage where it makes sense, and we need all to participate in finding solutions. We need our development community, who knows the business inside and out, to be deeply engaged in finding solutions. They can figure out 101 ways to build a home and finance it and build it. We've talked about it, and I just, I would love to see them more front and center in that discussion. And maybe it's happening and I don't see it, but my sense is there could be more. There's obviously a lot of give and take, but with the policy leadership of yourselves, the board of supervisors, the knowledge of the Community Development Agency and Planning Commission, our developers committed to moving Placer County ahead and support for finding solutions from the public, the time is right. We've just really have things teed up. We'll know we're getting it right when development proposals are filed that include plans for affordable housing on a regular basis. I think that'll be the measure in my mind that says we're there. We need to start with setting goals for that, and then when we start seeing that, I think we're going to be around that corner. Again, I commend the Community Development Department, Planning Commission, Board of Supervisors for continuing to move this discussion forward. I assure you, we in the community will stay engaged as well. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board on this?
Mike Garbidi in Placer Group, Sierra Club. On the question of regulatory relief, quote-unquote, costing nothing. Last year, I went to talk to the authors of the package, one of the package bills on housing, and I explained that based on my experience in my county, some of this legislation could very well lead to people being put in harm's way about where they, where they develop. And that needs to be a factor the legislature takes into account, because regulatory relief can cost lives as well as money. Now, sequa is a disclosure document to disclose environmental impacts such as fire hazards, landslides, after rain, after fires, and geological and other problems. It is the public's right to know, and they have just as much right to know, whatever kind of housing it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public comment. Thank you for your presentation. It looks like we've got plenty of work to do. Now we'll move to our 11:30. Public Works and Facilities, Presentation Status of Condition and Maintenance of Placer Lost the chair.
Good morning or good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board of supervisors.
Take it personally.
I'm kind of...
Because I have work.
Yeah, okay, got it, got it, got it. Kevin Tabor, Public Works, Facilities, Road Maintenance, here with Peter Kratz, giving a quick presentation to discuss the status of our road network maintenance efforts and maybe a little education on our funding as it looks now and moving into the future. So let's jump right into pavement, let's see. Ah, great. Pavement Condition Index. Overall, Placer County's roads are right smack dab in the middle of the fair category. Pavement Condition Index is kind of a state, now nationwide, way to rate, rate a road network. Roads, and it goes from zero to 100, zero being a completely failed road, 100 to being a brand-new road. So with seven, with a road with a PCI of 70 or greater, it'd be considered a good road. Between 50 and 70, a fair road. Below 30 to 50, in the poor, and then below that, very poor or failed category. So we're, we're fairly, we're right smack dab in the middle of the fair category at 58. So what does a 58 mean to you and me as we, we stand, as I stand here, as we drive our roads? Here's an example of some pavement condition indexes in the county. The far left is a fairly newly, fairly new overlay, and so it has a PCI of 95. That's two years old. Moving over is a PCI of 58. That, that would be a typical road in Placer County. It was constructed in the 60s, was overlaid once, a series of chip seals. You can, you can kind of tell some cracking's starting to develop there. Moving to the right, PCI of 50 at the bottom of the fair category. This is actually the same road, but further down the road, it's, you can see the patches, some crack filling, and then, and that gets it lower rating, 58 down to 50. Then moving to the far right, there's a PCI of 25, severe alligator cracking. No actual potholes in that road. We're actually able to glue that road back together. But, so that's kind of an idea of where we're at. And this, this ranking of 58 was derived in 2016, 2017, when we commissioned Nichols Consulting Engineers to do a survey of our, of our county roads and put together a report, which I believe we submitted to your board last year. So I'll move forward to talk about pavement condition index and, and how maintenance efforts look over time and what it can or cannot mean to a road. And a good way to look at maintaining roads is kind of thinking of it as maintaining your car. When you get a brand-new car, you want to do routine oil changes, and that keeps your, your new car running longer and running smoother. And that, that's kind of the way we approach our newer roads with an oil change or a slurry seal. And we like to slurry seal good roads to keep them, to keep them good. If you let those roads slide down, further down the pavement degradation curve into the fair category, the bottom of the fair category, you might be looking at a major tune-up, you know, as it relates to road maintenance and overlay. And, and you, and you see the solid black line there. That's the pavement degradation curve. As time goes on, and as it gets further down that degradation, the curve gets steeper. So if you don't change oil on your car, you don't do the overlay, you get into a new engine or reconstruction, and that's when we're looking at our poor roads. And of course, as with an oil change compared to a new engine, slurry seal compared to reconstruction, big price difference. And if you let a road completely fail, you're looking at brand-new, brand-new construction or a new car. So moving on, give you an idea of how our roads lay out across the county. The, we broke it up into three categories, low, medium, and high. Low elevation roads, below, below 500 feet, have an overall ranking of 59, which is real close to our overall average. The roads in the mid-elevation, a little bit higher, an average of 63. And in the upper elevations, overall PCI is 45. And the upper elevation roads, you know, as you imagine, weather is the main factor on the deterioration there. And correlating the two charts there, a majority of our roads are local roads. 63% of our roads are neighborhood roads and our rural county roads, and they have an overall PCI of 57. Our best roads are principal arterials, but unfortunately, they only make up 1% of our road network. But, so you compare a local neighborhood road to Douglas and Sierra College Boulevard, which have benefited some, from some major road maintenance over the years. Moving on. The way the road maintenance division budget operates is, a majority of our funding is through gas tax. HUTA, HOUDA, Highway User Tax Account taxes. And this is for the road maintenance division operating budget. So that's in the neighborhood of $10 and $11 million a year. We add on top of that some TDA sales taxes, and that ranges from 1.5 to $2 million a year. And then for the past couple decades, we've received Maintenance of Effort, General Fund Contribution of $3.8 million, and that's remained consistent over the past couple decades. Now, that's for our operating budget. In 2017, the governor signed into law SB 1, which, which raised the gas tax. And for fiscal year 1819, we're actually looking at receiving $7.3 million in additional funding over and above what's in the upper portion of the slide there. And, and a majority of our resurfacing efforts, overlay, chip seal, slurry seal, is funded by outside funding. And namely, that would be CSA funds, County Service Area Funds. We've gone after grants in the past and also received money from your board, general fund money in your board to finance those resurfacing projects. Looking forward, we're, we're going to heavily rely on SB 1 gas tax revenues to fund these, these future resurfacing efforts. A majority of our SB 1 revenue will go towards that. So projected for 1819 is $7.3 million. As it moves, moves on in time, when it's in full implementation, there, and this state is anticipating it'll be over $90 million of revenue, coming straight to Placer County for us to spend on roads. So the, just brief history on that. In 1994, the voters voted to increase the state gas tax from 0.09 per gallon to 0.18 per gallon, and it stayed at 0.18 per gallon. 18 cents per gallon, and it stayed at 18 cents per gallon until 2017, when SB 1 was implemented. So, over that time, nationwide, there, Bureau Labor Statistics reported about a 67% inflationary increase. In Northern California, we did a little research, it was actually, the inflation was 77%. So, the, with the implementation of SB 1, it added 12 cents on gasoline tax to bring it from 18 to 30, which is a 60 cent percent increase. So, that tracked with inflation over that same time period. The Department of Finance reports that for the average motorist, that's each motorist, the average cost motorist from SB 1 increase is roughly $10 a month. And they did the math on that. I didn't include it. But that gives you an idea of what it costs the average motorist and how it overall affects budget. But I'll move on. For the 1718 budget, if you remember, we awarded a contractor, Tyker Construction, in April, and it was an overlay contract that incorporated various fundings, but $2.5 million of that funding came directly from SB 1. And by the end of today, we will have spent all of that $2.5 million overlaying roads around the county. Five miles of those roads were on Tahoe's West Shore. We combined a little bit of the SB 1 funding with CSA funding to extend the overlay on East Roseville Parkway. And then, as I speak, Tyker Construction, under the same contract via change order, is spending the last round, the last payment that we received just in August, overlaying Penrin Road from the highway overpass north to Taylor. So, last year, we overlaid the southern half. This year, we're overlaying the northern half. So, at least with Placer County, I can say, almost as soon as we receive it, we're looking to spend it. So, to give you an idea of what this project accomplished, this is Corchevelle Road, picture taken about this time last year. Road that was constructed in the early 1970s, had one surface treatment over the years, a lot of patching, crack filling. It got to the point of its PCI was below 25. And fast forward a year, and we finished the overlay in mid-October, had some work to follow up after that, and actually, it's kind of interesting. Even the trees are greener.
It's a miracle.
It's an SB 1 miracle. So, that, so that brings the PCI of that road up to 100, and we see, we received a lot of good feedback from the residents up there, who are feeling neglected. And with this paving project, we actually incorporated some Cal Recycle Grant Funds to place a rubberized interlayer there, place a little bit of additional mix to super-elevate the road to improve drainage, and it's a really good project. Give you an idea of, I already mentioned this, but over the, at least the next several years, here's what we're anticipating on receiving. This was actually put together in 2017, where it shows our 1819 revenue at 7.03. It's already jumped up to 7.3. And then, moving forward, you know, the following year, 7.1, then up to 7.9. By 2025, they're anticipating $9 million of SB 1 revenue coming to Placer County. For our 1819 projects, in the interest of time, I'll go over these quickly. As I said earlier, a majority of our funding over the years, we're planning on using on resurfacing projects. So, depending on price of oil and what our bid prices look like, what the, how the winner treats us, if we have any catastrophes, we're basically planning on about 12 miles of overlay and 50 miles of slurry seal. With the slurry seal project, we'll combine that with CSA funds to make an even bigger project. Project number two, Western Placer County Chip Seal, that's actually in process right now, again, as we speak. We're chip sealing roads in Western Placer County, Sheridan, rural Lincoln area. Then, Peter's group is working on a Kings Beach project. This slide's a little bit wrong. Project number four, Penrin Road Culvert Replacement. Actually, the project will be over $1 million, but the SB 1 contribution to that is going to be $300,000. Looking at putting some money towards ADA curb ramps and sidewalk repairs, and we've got a small contract going right now to make ADA upgrades to the Willa Creek Plaza Way intersection near Big Five. Big Five's going to fix their driveways, and at the same time, we'll do our project. So, we'll public-private partnership there that's going to work out. With our reduction in forces, we don't have a tree crew anymore, so we're going to put a tree trimming contract out, hit hotspots as they come up. It'll be more of an on-call type project. And then, our final project that we're, they're allocating money towards is drainage improvements on East Conover Drive, which is on the south side of Donner Lake, and that project's actually already under, has been under construction. So, some much-needed drainage improvements on the south side of Donner Lake. So, kind of to summarize, moving forward with SB 1 funds, incorporating them in the whole scheme of road maintenance. If these funds continue, we'll look to do 10 to 20 miles of overlay a year, 30 to 50 miles of slurry seal, and 40 to 80 miles of chip seal at those rates there. And as funds continue to grow, you know, we'll, we have bridges to look at and other miscellaneous projects as they come up, you know, so SB 1 will help out in that regard. Now, if SB 1 goes away, there's a ballot measure coming up in November. If it goes away, it doesn't mean we're going to stop maintaining roads. We'll keep on doing what we're doing, and we do it pretty well. We'll keep on trimming trees, we'll keep on plowing snow, we'll keep on striping the roads, we'll keep on patching potholes, and we'll keep on going after grant funds and utilizing CSA funds to do our, to do our resurfacing projects and potentially asking your board for additional funding to augment that program. But what that means is, instead of doing an average of 80 to 120 miles of resurfacing a year, it'll be more like 10 to 20 miles. So, instead of having an overall 10-year resurfacing schedule, it'll be more likely a 50 to 100-year resurfacing schedule. And that's just, that's just math numbers. We have over 1,000 miles of roadway in the county, so, you know, if, depending on what the funding scenario is, depending on how many roads we can cover each year. So, with that, I know there's other presenters behind me ready to go. I'll hand it over to your board if you have any questions.
Thanks, Kevin. The Penrin Road Culvert Replacement, the $300,000 is we expect from SB 1. If SB 1 is repealed, does that hinder doing that culvert?
Potentially, it does. The, that culvert is Matt Randall with the Bridge Program. He's, he's working with the different agencies to get approval to do the project, and, you know, if the $300,000 goes away, it is likely we'll have to postpone it until we collect enough funds to make up the funding difference that he's looking at. That's how he came up with 300. He added up all his sources and said, "I need $300,000."
Does he have to work with Fish and Wildlife?
I think he's working with Fish and Wildlife and, oh, yes.
That's enough. All right, thank you. Any other questions from board members? I see none. Anyone in the audience wish to answer this?
Mike Garabedian for the Sierra Club. Regarding the repeal of SB 1 that's on the ballot, Sierra Club opposes that appeal. Just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. All righty. Any other comments? Oh, Supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah, I really just want to thank county staff because you guys have done just phenomenal work with very limited resources. SB 1 has given us the opportunity to address a number of significant and longstanding constituent complaints in my district and I'm sure in all the others. And, you know, I am just telling you, I'm not advocating for the county here, but I'm just telling you, I'm letting everyone I know say that, you know, they should be opposing Prop 6, I believe it is, on the ballot coming forward this fall. We will be in a tough situation if we lose these dollars, and our constituents will not be happy with the level of service that they will be receiving. So, thank you guys for all your efforts.
Any other comments? All right, seeing no more comments, thank you very much for your presentation. You want a break? What's the board's, is the board?
I have a suggestion through the department items, if there'll be just quick five-minute items and allowing our staff to get back prior to breaking for lunch.
Brett Story's going to be five minutes.
Well.
All right, then, if there's no problem, we'll go ahead and finish the department items. District Attorney. There's, she's been waiting patiently. Lauren Featherstone.
Mine will be less than five minutes.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chairman Holmes, members of the board. Lauren Featherstone with the District Attorney's Office. So, for about 10 years, the District Attorney's Office has participated in a joint powers agreement with the California Victim Compensation Board. This JPA in front of you today is to extend our existing agreement from July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2021. Our office will receive an annual amount of about $260,000, which provides funding for three claim specialists that are working in our victim witness unit. These claim specialists assist victims of crimes, process applications for reimbursement of expenses such as relocations, as well as funeral and burial expenses. We are requesting you adopt a resolution authorizing the district attorney to sign the agreement and extend the terms of the JPA. This revenue is included in our 1819 budget and has no impact to the County General Fund.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, anyone in the audience? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Second.
They moved the second to approve the California Victim Compensation Board Agreement for the District Attorney. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move to Public Works and Facilities. An update on the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act and the Groundwater Sustainability Plan Development. Mr. Story.
Thank you, Honorable Supervisors. Brett Story from Environmental Utilities and my colleague Chris Hansen from the same department. We're going to provide you an update between us of what's happened.
Okay.
I don't have a clicker, though. Thank you. Sorry, Ken. Thank you. Okay, just a little bit of the milestones. As you recall, we turned in an alternative plan for the Marthis Valley in January of 2017. We formed a groundwater sustainability agency with our partners here in Western Placer County, which I'll go into in a minute, on June 30 of 2017. We, our next step would be to submit a groundwater sustainability plan, January 1 of 2022. We hope to beat that, and I'll talk a little bit about who's doing what on that program a little later. And we perform public outreach to all stakeholders throughout the process in both our basins. We do have two active groundwater basins, the high priority North American Sub Basin and the medium priority Marthis Valley Basin, just as background. And this, of course, is a picture of our Western Placer Basin, the forming agencies, City of Lincoln, City of Roseville, PCWA, Placer County, Nevada Irrigation District, and Cal American Water Company. Wanted to provide you just a little bit of background about the basin to tell you how healthy it is. We also did some groundwater quality study in the last couple of years. A number of samples were taken from 55 monitoring wells throughout Western Placer County, and over 100 chemicals we're analyzing, general minerals, minerals, metals, or altal organic compounds, nitrate, and percolate. None of these wells were from drinking water sources. All of that's certainly done through PCWA and NID, and it's all clean, and all of those municipal systems meet all drinking water standards. These are done to check out how the rest of the area is. And the conclusions of those, that it's, that the basin is at sustainable levels now, and we hope our charge is to keep it that way. The groundwater quality is generally good throughout the basin. We will do routine sampling of wells and continue that on an annual basis. There are a few selected wells and constituents that are being evaluated for long-term trends, and what that really means is, we've found some things that are a little bit outside of what we want them, and so, we're going to take a deeper dive, look at those, to monitor those and make sure. And the water quality will be used during the development of it. And just a little bit about the aquifer itself, in the 50, or pre-1980, it declined by 55 feet. Everyone in the area recognized that and did things to counteract that. During the recent drought, it only went down about seven feet. And this is just, I know it's too much to read, but essentially, on those wells, we see in the last year, they've come up five feet, three feet, two feet. Some of the other wells near the, near the rock formations at Rockland are pretty much where they are, they always will be. So, we see that it's a healthy basin, that once we got some water back into the system, it came about.
Supervisor.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Yes, sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to clarify something. It dropped 55 feet. Did it recharge back up to 55?
It did not. It was a, if you, if you go back, you can see that blue line. It was a decline of quite a bit of water, and then, when everyone started utilizing surface water in the region more and more, it stabilized over that time. So, it's still down from where it originally was, but it's still considered healthy and sustainable. And the real way to test that is the bounce back. So, we went down seven or 10 feet during the drought. It's bounced back up, and that's really the goal of it. We, I don't think we'd ever get back up to that level because there's too many human beings living here. Again, we formed the Western Placer Groundwater Sustainability Agency in 2017. We're now recognized by the Department of Water Resources as the Sigma Agency to implement anything in that area, and Placer County is designated as the administrative agency. And so, we perform for all of the six agencies, all of the agreements and technical agreements. We've held multiple outreach meetings, which Chris will go into in a sec. We've hired a groundwater consultant, GEI Incorporated out of Rancho Cordova. They've actually been with the groundwater group for about eight to 10 years. They are actually also part of the Department of Water Resources consulting team, so we feel like we have a nice blend of local and state background that we can, we can get to. They've performed a variety of technical studies. They're also looking at an agricultural recharge project, which we will be bringing back to the Agriculture Commission and then to the board later, or later this year and early next year. And the North American Sub Basin itself, we are a part of our Western Placer GSA along with Sacramento GSA. They are the lead for the Groundwater Sustainability Plan. South Sutter Water District, which of course, you know, we have an agreement, an MOA with to make sure our residents are protected. We also have Sutter County as a GSA and the Reclamation District 1001 as a GSA participating. Again, we're looking to develop one plan for the entire basin. It will save us time, money, and most importantly, it will take into account the entire public interest of that basin in one plan. So, that's why we decided to do it. We submitted a Proposition 1 grant application for close to $1 million, and won. The flip side of that is, we have to provide matching dollars, which we do in both in-kind and cash, which has already been prepared. Most of ours is in this year's budget, which you have already approved, most of our share. We completed an RFP process. We now have modelers onboard, local Woodard and Curran, GSP developments from GEI, as well as the database, and then, we have MBK Engineering also supporting this effort to move forward. Our budget is about $2 million, which, as you heard, is half-funded by the grant, half by the rest of us. It's spread across three years. It will fulfill the development of all state guidelines for that, and our share is about $241,000 across three years, across six agencies. So, our Placer County personal share is pretty small when you think about the, making sure the basin is healthy. Once we have all those consultants in place, we'll get more into the details of what we can expect out of that GSP. The modeling will start working, where we're looking at all land development and all agricultural development in the area, not just Placer County, but the whole. We'll model it, we'll see what kind of outcomes. We'll do a bunch of what-ifs to determine how we remain healthy, and then, that, we should start getting some information in 2019 about how that's looking, which we would bring back to the public and your board. A little bit about outreach, I'll let Chris take over.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll try to go quickly through these. We like to, when we come, bring these updates before your board, to provide a recap of the outreach that we do. The act includes a lot of emphasis on stakeholder engagement and actually several specific requirements related to that. So, this is just a recap of some of the things that we've done over the past few years since the Sustainability Agency was formed, starting out with a lot of emphasis on agriculture, reaching out to the agriculture community. We know that in Placer County, they're the largest user of groundwater and therefore have the largest need. We wanted to be sure that they were informed of the act, what our role is in complying with it, and that their interests were met. So, that pretty much guided us through the outreach that we have done over the last few years, starting with development of the communication plan. We have kept the Agriculture Commission and Commissioner informed. We have kept the Agriculture Commission and Commissioner informed as we go along. In fact, the Commissioner has moderated a few of our public workshops that we've held over the years. To keep people informed, we developed a website. We've had several meetings, maintained a stakeholder list and an interested party list. The law requires that we make an opportunity available for people who are interested to sign up to receive notifications online. We have over 200 people on our list right now. Like I said, we've held several public meetings, several up until the formation of the Sustainability Agency and three meetings since. Most recently, we conducted an engagement survey to those stakeholders and interested parties to assess how we're doing with our outreach. And we're beginning right now the communication plan that defines how we do outreach and to whom, throughout the development of the Sustainability Plan. And like I said, the law includes specific milestones when we need to communicate with people. And one of those examples is during the initial notification process. So the state requires that all sustainability agencies submit an online initial notification to the Department of Water Resources that includes specific information, and that notification is available to the public and needs to let the Department and the public know what our process is for developing the Sustainability Plan, as well as for interested parties to be involved, how they can go about doing that. Brett explained that we have multiple sustainability agencies that are working together to prepare a single plan for the entire basin. In those cases, only a single notification is required to be filed. There are no formal adoption requirements related to filing the initial notification, so that's why we're coming here today as an information item. Essentially, when your Board approved formation of the Sustainability Agency, you authorized us to move forward and comply with the Act, which includes preparing the Sustainability Plan. So the Sacramento Groundwater Authority, Brett explained that they are the lead agencies for the North American Sub Basin. They filed the initial notification online yesterday, I believe. They provided a copy of the notification to all the cities and counties and water agencies in the North American Sub Basin area. In turn, our West Placer Sustainability Agency member agencies are in turn going to share this information with their Boards and Council meetings, like we're doing today. So we can essentially provide this information in a public forum about preparation of the Sustainability Plan. Information will also be posted on our westplacergroundwater.com website, as well as a newly formed website for the North American Sub Basin. And the public can comment on the initial notification, and that is done through the Department of Water Resources' online system. And so I mentioned that the notification must include key information for the public to understand what's going on. So these are excerpts from the actual notifications. So if the public went online and looked at the notification, they would learn that developing the Sustainability Plan will begin with the communication plan that I discussed. We'll share that with the public so they can provide feedback. A webpage for the North American Sub Basin is under development, and we'll post information on there about preparation of the plan. Through that website, people can sign up there as well to receive notifications. And they learn that the next phase will involve developing a computer model to assess the current and future sustainability of the basin. So any interested parties can contact either Sacramento Groundwater Authority or any of the Sustainability Agency. Contacts in all of our agencies' information will be available online when they go look at that. So again, where to find information on the initial notification for the public to provide comments on it, they need to go through the Department of Water Resources website listed. A new website for the North American Sub Basin is going to be created, should be up soon. That will provide information about the basin and preparation of the Sustainability Plan. And as always, on our westernplacergroundwater.com, we will post information and regular updates there as well.
And just a quick update on the Marthis Valley Basin. We did turn in our alternative plan. Trucky Donner, PUD, is the administrator. They have until the end of the year to judge the merits of that plan. We've been told they're going to take that much time. We hopefully will get something that says we are involved in really finishing that plan up and having it accepted. We filed our annual report as required to do on April 1st for the guidelines. The basin status is healthy. As a matter of fact, it's got 26 straight years of sustainability. It's one of the healthiest basins in all of California. We've held several public meetings up there. There's also, the Department of Water Resources went through a basin prioritization process. We actually reviewed it, and technically, we should not have been part of this process, so we just provided those comments to them. They looked at all of our numbers, and somehow, we came out as having terrible groundwater water quality, and we don't. There was one well that did, and so there was some, so we've pointed that out to them because we want the public to understand. They may rate us that way, but this is the real information. So we've asked them to update that. If they don't change our priority, that would be fine, but we want the public to know that it is good quality water up there. And we'll happily answer any questions you might have.
I, excuse me, I see no questions. Thank you so much for your very in-depth, that's not a pun, in-depth and quick review of the.
We hadn't been here in a while, sorry about that.
Yeah, that's what I said. You got it. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, did the public have anything to say? No. Now we're going to go to our Placer County Dial-A-Ride. Morning Will, or good afternoon Will?
Good afternoon. Will Garner, Public Works and Facilities. Thank you for considering this today. This is an item to, we are requesting a one-year extension through October of 2019 for our Dial-A-Ride contract with MV Transportation. Through this contract, we provide our Dial-A-Ride services in the Auburn area, Rockland, Loomis, Lincoln, and Granite Bay. We in turn have funding agreements to fund the service within the cities of Rockland, Loomis, and Lincoln. And then the county funds our portions in the unincorporated area. The increase overall is 5.6%, but also that incorporates a 17% increase of service hours within the city of Lincoln, which actually has already happened in the current contract year. So overall, when you factor in the service hour increase in Lincoln, the rate of increase is 2.4% over the prior year. And so what we will do is extend, we would like to extend this one more year. And then during that year, we would prepare the request for proposal to go out for new services. Now, this year, having just completed a short-range transit plan, which we will in turn bring to this Board soon, we'll incorporate some new things that are being proposed for Dial-A-Ride and those types of services around the county. And so with that, we're recommending that you authorize the Director to execute this one-year agreement. And the dollar amounts are noted in the staff report.
Any questions? Seeing none. Anyone in the audience have a question? Seeing no audience. We'll bring her back to the Board for action. Moved to second to approve the item. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? The item is passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Board will now adjourn to closed session to consider two items. First, they will take up conference with labor negotiators. And second, they will adjourn as the Board of Supervisors reconvene as the successor agency to take up one item of real property negotiations related to the real property that's identified in the agenda.
Okay. And then we'll be back sometime soon to go over our 1 o'clock timed item, the final budget. Mr. Vic. Mr. Vic, did you forget your jacket? Huh?
Here, I'll give mine. It'll be like.
Will, wait a few seconds. See Supervisor Ann joins us.
Do you want to report that first?
Yeah. We're going to go ahead and report out a closed session. Yeah.
The Board met in closed session to consider two items. The first was negotiations with labor. Labor gave, and the Board gave direction regarding those negotiations. The second item was taken up as the Placer County Successor Agency regarding real property negotiations. The Board gave direction regarding those negotiations. This concludes the report back from closed session.
All right. Thank you. Now the Board will take up the 2 o'clock item. It's actually for 1 o'clock. The adoption of fiscal year 2018-19 final budget. Ms. Kate.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. I'm here to present, excuse me, Kate Sampson with your County Executive Office, here to present your final budget this afternoon. The recommended actions today include conducting a public hearing, adopting the final budget of your operating and proprietary funds, as well as a final budget resolution for special districts, and adopting the fiscal year 1819 five-year capital improvement plan. Just for your review, the budget process amazingly takes up most of the year. We start in January, and Departments submit their requests in the March-April timeframe when those are reviewed. We meet with you in March to give you a mid-year update. And this last April, you had some strategic planning workshops to help provide direction on your priorities. We had departmental budget presentations in May, as well as additional policy discussion from the Board. You adopted your proposed budget on June 26th. And then today is the last step in the process, the final budget hearing. This table shows you an overview of all of your operating funds. We have about $30 million to add to the budget since June, when you adopted the proposed budget, which represents about a 3% increase. And I'll walk through some of the details of that throughout the presentation. This chart reflects how you spend your operating budget of $970 million. You can see that the largest single slice of that pie is salaries and benefits. That represents about 36% of your operating budget, followed by capital construction and services and supplies at 21% and 20% respectively. Focusing on the salaries and benefits piece, this, these compensation costs are about $350 million of your total operating budget. And about 20% of those costs are associated with your current pension costs. This table shows that for your miscellaneous and safety plans, your budget for fiscal year 1819 is about $61 million. As a percentage of payroll, you're paying about 27% for your miscellaneous employees, and about 38% of every dollar spent on your safety plan goes towards pension costs. The bottom half of the slide shows your total liabilities, as well as assets you already have in the plan. The summary is that your plan is about 65% funded. As we know, these costs are going to increase over time. You've seen this slide before, but it reflects a forecast for the next handful of years. Our health insurance, which affects our retiree health costs, or OPEB, other post-employment benefits, will increase at a more modest rate, but the green section of the graph shows your pension cost through CalPERS. And the $61 million budgeted for 1819 is projected to increase to be over $91 million by fiscal year 22-23, which is about 38% growth. To help offset these future costs, you were able to initiate your Section 115 trust fund to address future pension liabilities. In fiscal year 1718, we were able to contribute just over $6.6 million to that trust fund. And over time, those investment earnings can help you to offset these increased costs in the future. As I mentioned, you also have other post-employment benefits to address, or OPEB. This slide reflects our most recent numbers from our actuarial reports. In fiscal year 1819, you have $15 million budgeted for retiree insurance premiums and about $15 million to address unfunded OPEB liabilities. Your total liability at this, projected at the end of last fiscal year, is just under $450 million. And your assets are valued at about $350 million, which means your plan is about 78% funded. I'll note that the average funding ratio for agencies in California is about 30%, so you are well beyond where most agencies have funded their OPEB obligations.
Quick question, Mr. Chairman, on that one. Were the OPEB assets, did they receive the same reduction, valuation reduction, as the retirement did based on the reduction in the projected earnings going forward and the assumption of the earnings going forward?
It does not, so your OPEB assets are held in a different fund, and their expected rate of return is slightly different from what we see with the pensions. But you'll notice here that last year, our actuary recommended we reduce our discount rate to 6.5%, which is actually lower than the outlook for pension. That's, I would say, probably on the quite conservative side. And actually, maybe this will help. This slide reflects how the OPEB fund has performed since you deposited funds in it. So you initiated this fund in 2008 with about $25 million, and over the last decade, you've contributed over $200 million, so on average, about $20 million a year. And as a result of that diligence, you've earned an additional $137 million in investments, and you've actually had a rate of return of about 7.6% over the last decade. So although the discount rate from our actuary shows 6.5%, you've performed quite a bit better than that.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
And once again, just to highlight, of about 600 agencies in California that are part of this trust fund, Placer is in the top five of agencies with assets on deposit.
Top five percent or top five number?
Throughout the state.
Wow.
Yeah.
And in an informal survey of other counties in California, Placer was number four in terms of funding percentage of your OPEB liabilities. Although I'll note that of the other top three, two of them had liabilities that were less than a tenth of Placer's. So you're exceptionally well positioned as compared to other counties in the state. You know, when we contrast the funding of your OPEB plan versus pension, staff would like to do a little more work around, you know, how we address both of these obligations in a prudent way. So later in the fiscal year, we'll return to you with some policy considerations on how we fund both of these obligations.
Right now, pension word about 62?
65. Okay, other policy considerations with this budget include reserve funding in your self-insurance funds, which include general liability and workers' compensation. So briefly, in fiscal year 17-18, we experienced higher-than-average claim expenditures in both of those funds, which also increased our actuarial liability for the future. The board has a policy that requires that we maintain reserves at an 80% confidence level. And currently, neither of these funds are funded at that level. And that's based on an expectation that last year's experience was more of a spike rather than the new trend, and we will continue to monitor that. Our recommendation to you is that we restore our reserves over the next about three years, back to the level that you've set as your preferred funding level. An alternative would be a one-time transfer from the general fund to restore those reserves, which would combined be about $6 million. So we have not recommended that to you at this time, although it is an option available to you. Another policy consideration for you to be aware of is, in an effort to balance the budget for your Public Ways and Facilities Fund, also known as your road fund. The top part of this slide shows kind of a graphic that represents your board's policy that says that not to balance a budget, we don't just look at revenues equal expenditures, but we also take into account any available fund balance and reserves as part of that equation. An interesting thing in your road fund is that over the last decade, your board has approved a number of advances for constructing projects like the Auburn-Folsom widening, the Kings Beach Beach Commercial Core improvements, Highway 65 and Sunset interchange, Placer Parkway, and some others. So you've advanced some funds to be sure those improvements get in the ground. Although, from an accounting standpoint, when those are added to the books, it creates a negative available fund balance of about $16 million in your road fund. There are about $20.5 million in those outstanding loans that will be repaid over several years, and there are identified funding sources for those repayments. Additionally, the road fund is able to meet its current obligations in this coming fiscal year. So from a revenues and expenditures standpoint, the road fund is well positioned. But in order to balance the budget to accommodate the starting fund balance, we recommend to you that you reserve, that you cancel reserves in the road fund of about $2.3 million, and we budget a transfer from the general fund of just under $14 million for budgetary purposes. This is an evolving situation. We have staff working on potential solutions. We may return to you later in the year for an adjustment on this issue. But at this point in time, your budget is prepared with this transfer on paper, although we would not propose to physically transfer the cash to the road fund unless it were necessary at a later point in time, and we'd report that back to you. So to dive a little deeper on your general fund, which is the fund over which the board has the most discretion, this is a depiction of last year's budget versus fiscal year 18-19 budget. You can see that the single largest source of revenue is local taxes. We've identified 5.5% growth in your secured property taxes, as well as an additional $2.5 million in sales taxes, and additional growth in intergovernmental revenues, which is the green portion of the bar, which is largely associated with your Health and Human Services activities. When we look at how these funds are spent, this view shows us by category. You'll see that salaries and benefits, again, is about 35% of your general fund budget. And we've had a modest increase in services and supplies of about 3%. That represents about a quarter of your total general fund spending. Sliced differently, your general fund by system shows that the primary growth is in your public protection and Health and Human Services support, which, again, on the Health and Human Services side, is largely paid for by intergovernmental revenue. This is an updated projection from our five-year forecasting model. It includes cost increases, particularly on the salary and benefit side that are known, as well as general inflation for supplies. What you see here is, over time, the green bar, which is your total expenses, at a varied rate exceeds the blue bar, which is your total revenues. And we can expect, if that trend continues, that over time, our total fund balance, you know, will decline. There is some pressure here on your general fund, although I would say we don't see, we don't see enough pressure at this point to alter your operating budget for the general fund in 18-19. An update since proposed budget is that we expected an estimated fund balance of $24.5 million from fiscal year 17-18. In actuality, when we closed the books, we had $39.8 million, which is a variance of a little over $15 million. There's a breakdown for you here of where that $15 million was generated. We overestimated expenditures by less than 1%, which generated a little over $2 million. We underestimated revenues by about 1.5%, which resulted in a little over $4 million. Additionally, Health and Human Services delivered more fund balance than they had projected in the amount of about $2 million. The largest single item is an unanticipated reimbursement from the state for state-mandated costs, known as SB 90. We submit those claims every year. The state rarely includes in their budget actual payment of those claims, but we did receive $6.2 million here, and we consider that a one-time revenue source available to you in 18-19. So with this additional fund balance, there were a number of items we discussed at proposed budget that we would try to incorporate at final budget, and here's a list of the significant changes. First and foremost, we, if you'll recall, in June, we talked about not having sufficient fund balance to contribute to your capital reserves. We were able to contribute in a significant manner, not only $5.5 million to your capital reserves, but a total of $3 million that was planned for projects such as the Coroner Facility and Elections Warehouse. We also have a continued investment in innovation projects. There were planned contributions to your Workday Enterprise Resource System of $3.1 million, and also your county-wide radio project in the amount of a little over $600,000. Additionally, the board expressed some interest in maintaining a contribution to open space. Over the last several years, the board has included a $1 million contribution to open space. We had a half million dollars programmed in the proposed budget, and we're able to bring that up to the historical contribution level in your final budget. We are adding about $1 million to your general fund contingency reserves and contributing an additional $1.4 million to your public safety fund, which is consistent with the funding level percentage of discretionary revenues that you have used in the recent past. This slide reflects that contribution to your general fund contingency reserves. Your policy requires 5% as your target, and we've actually exceeded that. It's about 5.2% in your final budget, so you've got a good rainy day fund stashed away. In terms of other funds, I'll do a quick overview of your public safety fund. We have had about a 3% change since proposed budget, and that's largely due to rebudgeting some technology projects in the sheriff's office and a jail surveillance project. We will contribute, as planned, to one of the correctional facility construction projects, $404,000. And there are also an additional $600,000 in asset forfeiture expenditures planned in the district attorney's office. Additionally, I'd like to note that there are reserves available in the public safety fund and the general fund contingency for additional initiatives that may come forward to you during the year, including a body-worn camera program. In terms of capital and infrastructure funds, you've got some modest adjustments here associated with your capital improvement plan, some of those we've already discussed. I would also like to note that using available project fund balance, there's up to an additional $2 million available for major rehabilitation of county facilities. So you'll see some additional investment in your county buildings at no additional cost to the general fund at this time. In terms of your proprietary funds, you have a number of internal service funds, which provide service to other county departments and charge their customers for those services. So those are, for the most part, internal transfers within your county departments. You also have a handful of enterprise funds, which deliver services to the public, but charge fees for those services and are intended to operate somewhat like a business. So you've got a number of adjustments here that are rebudgeted projects that were not accomplished last year and other technical adjustments. In these other funds, a couple other items to note, significant changes. We've rebudgeted $200,000 for your budget system reconfiguration that interfaces with your Workday project. We have a reduction in the general fund contribution to the FIRE fund. You may recall that we increased that contribution in June based on what were planned expenditures in 17-18. Some of those expenditures came in a little under what we estimated, so we were able to reduce the general fund contribution back to its historical level. Although I will note that many of your FIRE zones of benefit did dip quite a bit into their reserves in 17-18, and we have not yet reached a sustainable operation for those service areas, as you're well aware. We do have a number of software and hardware projects related to IT that we have budgeted, and I mentioned to you the contribution to the road fund in order to balance the budget that's represented here. In terms of funded positions, the only change to note from proposed budget is an item that was approved in June by your board and includes one position to oversee the food services appropriation, to provide services primarily in our correctional facilities. Additionally, just to note, you have about $47.5 million budgeted in your special districts. There are a number of the larger funds noted here. And circling back to our recommendations, I'll note that we have updated your capital improvement plan to reflect the changes discussed today. And again, our recommendation is that you would adopt a resolution for both your, for your operating funds and proprietary funds, approve the master fixed asset list and the ordinance of allocated positions. And then you also have a resolution for special districts totaling $47.5 million and a proposed update to your capital improvement plan for your review. That concludes my presentation. I'm certainly available for any questions.
I have a question. The almost $600,000 asset forfeiture expenditures, how are those money spent?
It includes $100,000 for law enforcement training, $200,000 for a cubicle reorganization project or an internal renovation project to the office.
Which office is that?
The district attorney's office. $75,000 for district attorney vehicle purchases, and about $220,000 for a case management system in the district attorney's office.
Okay, Supervisor Montgomery.
Thank you. Kate, thanks very much. I mentioned before, when I first saw your presentation online last week, that I thought you pulled a lot of really important information into a fairly constrained package here, so thank you. Couple of the things that I just wanted to touch on is I know that we have started at Placer County to really more robustly use priority-based budgeting. We rolled it out initially with just a couple of departments. I know that we are also now kind of trying to roll in the board strategic goals that we came up with. Was that last spring? When was that?
It was April.
April. That was last spring. I know that we're trying to roll those in as part of the analysis around whether or not we're actually getting efficiency and efficacy out of our programs in light of some of those strategic goals. But I just wanted to say, I think it's important that the community at large recognizes that that is something that we are using. One of the other things that I think is really important, because I hear this from community members all the time, is around numbers, total numbers of employees that we have here at Placer County. I think the chart shows that we have 2,650 employees right now at Placer County with this one new position coming forward. I think it's important to note that 19, mid-'90s, I want to say, we had about 10 residents to every employee at Placer County. No, we had six residents to every employee.
No, no.
No. I'm getting those numbers wrong. What I'm trying to get at is, we have about half as many employees now serving, double the number essentially of population. And so it's really, I think it's important for people to understand that we are not heavy on employees at Placer County, that we have really looked very closely, and when I say "we," I mean department has, I mean everybody, has looked very closely at how we can better manage the limited tax dollars of our constituents for the benefit of the county with relatively fewer employees. And I think that's a really important thing to express, even though it's been a really long day and I expressed it very poorly. So those are my only comments on this, but thank you very much. Oh, no, I have one more comment, which is, I had been hopeful, I think as many of us were, that we would see some specific earmarked money in here for housing. And that's, I think, a conversation that our board really does need to continue having. We're talking about doing this, and we're talking about the development. But if we're going to take some sort of role in that, we really need to identify those dollars. So I would just make the suggestion to the four board members who are here, and Robert, when he reviews this meeting, which I'm sure he will, that if we, you know, identify any unforeseen revenues or windfalls coming forward over the course of this fiscal year, we think about allocating those to our housing programs. That's it.
Supervisor, you.
Yeah, just to help my colleagues with a couple of-
Yeah, just to help my colleagues with a couple of the numbers. In the last 10 years, from '07-'08 through 17-18, the county's population has increased 19%. Our revenues have only increased 11%, and our employee workforce has increased 2%.
And if you look farther back, it's even more.
Right. Yeah, but to that point, on a per capita basis, obviously, if our countywide population's increased 19%, and our employee workforce has only increased 2%, then clearly, it's trending the right direction.
Thanks for that clarification.
You're back.
We're not depending on your perspective.
Yeah.
Okay.
Supervisor Duran.
Yes, thank you. My apologies for having to run out, but, you know, anytime we have extra, I always look at that as being a blessing. And I know that we have, you know, some pretty serious issues like fire, and I think we need to, before we do anything, we really need to talk to people with a portion of this excess and find out exactly really where it needs to go. And, you know, God bless staff for wanting to squirrel away all the money, you know, that we have extra, but at the end of the day, you know, we do have some pretty serious things that we want to work, that we have to work on, and that other people, you know, could be, you know, could benefit from it. And, you know, while I'm not saying any dollar figure, I know that the Forest Hill vote just went down on their fire, you know, bump. So there's, you know, a couple of other things, you know, that I think that we really need to take a look at before we start, you know, hammering down and putting this money in this fund and that fund and whatever. I think we really do need, at least, to put some of that money away so we can have a cushion to have, whether it goes into reserves or whatever, you know, I think that maybe buys us some extra time so we can really drill down on, you know, the different issues that are at play here. And it's not just the jurisdictions, the independent jurisdictions. I mean, there's a bigger nut to crack with regards to the cities and the counties' uses and implementation and operation of a fire system, which I think, you know, if, once the politicians kind of step aside and let people start thinking about those things, I think we can do some really good work there. But it all starts and costs money to do, so anyway.
Okay, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, before we, any other comments, just thank the staff. This has been a tremendous effort. I know, as Kate mentioned, this is a multi-month and sometimes an annual budget process, and so I just want to give kind of recognition to the budget office and the folks in the CEO's office, and honestly, specifically, many of the departments, some that are sitting out here in the audience, they put a lot of time and effort in this. So I just want to say thank you. It's really a, I think, a good foundational budget for us to build on, so.
Good work. Okay, now I'm going to open up the public hearing. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the board on this item? See anybody? I don't see anybody in the Tahoe City office, so I'll close the public hearing before anybody changes their mind, and bring it back to action. So we're being asked to adopt adoption of final budget and related actions. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any objections?
The budget is passed. Thank you all for your hard diligent work on this and for your kind attention today. That closes our meeting.